Are we good? Okay, good. Okay, now call to order the adjourned regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Madam Clerk, before you do the roll call, let's stand up and do the pledge of allegiance together.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, now will you please do the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council is present.
Okay, good. Madam City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. On some of the closed session items, the council gave direction with respect to the initiation of litigation potential for four cases, counsel on motion by Councilmember Beulah, seconded by Councilmember Marr, authorized staff to initiate litigation in four matters. That is all I will disclose about that this evening, and that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem for item number one because I received campaign donations from the apartment associations, and the rental registry item would indirectly impact them. So, I'll be, I'll see you back on the second item. Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
Thank you all for being here today. City Clerk, can you please read the title?
Thank you. This is update on support services and assistance for residents and tracking of at-fault evictions. Introduction by Deputy City Manager Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council. Tonight, I am joined by our Government Affairs Manager, Jay Barkman, and our Management Analyst, Sergio Escobar. Per the City Council's direction at the August 5th City Council meeting, staff is here to provide you an update on the, on the following items: the donation of two, to two local nonprofits, and the staff's research on rental registry programs and at, tracking of at-fault evictions. Later this evening, you will hear from the city attorney on a legal defense program and an update on the Perdomo versus Noem case. At this time, I will hand it over to Sergio Escobar, who will provide an update on the city's donations.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes, and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. As directed by the City Council, staff contacted and coordinated the donation of $100,000 to the two identified local nonprofits, Enough For All and Someone Cares Soup Kitchen regarding the proposed donations. Both organizations confirmed the acceptance of the donation. The $50,000 contribution to Enough For All Fund will help provide assistance with rent, groceries, and other essential necessities. Someone Cares Soup Kitchen will also receive a $50,000 contribution, which will provide daily meals and groceries to impacted residents. I'd like to report that the funding has been dispersed to both organizations. Any Costa Mesa resident who has been impacted by federal enforcement activity is encouraged to contact the organizations directly to receive assistance. And now I'll turn it over to Jay Barkman, who will provide an update on at-fault evictions and the rental registry.
Thank you, Sergio. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, as requested, we conducted preliminary research into city programs targeting at-fault evictions and tools used such as rental registries. As you all may recall, the city has previously taken action regarding no-fault eviction, evictions, where a landlord is removing a unit from the rental market for reasons specified in state law, such as an owner move-in. Let me shift here. At-fault evictions occur for reasons such as non-payment of rent, lease violations, nuisances, or criminal activity, and may result in civil litigation. The courts do not report or track at-fault evictions in a matter the cities can access. Therefore, some cities have developed their own programs, which includes the use of rental registries, typically for the purpose of monitoring just cause and rent stabilization programs. Preliminary research identified eight cities with registries, mostly charter cities with larger populations, and in reviewing these cities, we noted rental registries are used to track base rent amounts, annual increases, related fees, and to provide transparency for tenants and landlords. Fees for landlords to register range from as low as $29 to almost $400 per unit. We also found that registries are staff, staff-intensive to start-up, especially with the initial steps required to correctly identify rental properties, and outside software was necessary to track and manage cases. Start-up costs can be close to $300,000 in the first year, with annual software costs of around $85,000. In addition, dedicated staffing is needed to identify the properties, issue notices, track complaints, and educate landlords and tenants. City programs that we reviewed range in their design from the use of rent boards or housing and community service departments, each with dedicated staff to administer efforts focused on education, mediation, or enforcement. Currently, the city of Costa Mesa does not have the structure in place to, excuse me, does not have the structure in place to provide the services needed for such a program. Therefore, the information tonight is provided for your consideration, and with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you so much, staff. Per drug changes prior council meetings, we're going to have the public go first. So, now the time for public comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak.
Mayor Pro Tem, can we ask questions first?
The script says, "Public comment, then questions."
I think the way that, Ms. Green, can you clarify, please?
Yes, it's up to comment, but many times after the presentation, you ask clarifying questions.
Okay. I'll let Council ask questions then.
Thank you. May I ask a question? Can you clarify the difference? Those are pretty wide range you gave for administrative fees associated with running these programs. Can you, do you have any indication of why the variation is so wide?
Well, it varies based on the city's kind of level of engagement, I would say, in the program, how active they were in enforcing whether it's a rent control-based system or if they're just requiring, you know, imposing some noticing requirements on landlords when they're dealing with tenants. So, it varies based on the size of the city and just how robust their effort is, if they have to provide mediation, things like that. So, based on preliminary research, that's what I saw.
And that's a good segue. So, I was curious about noticing requirements in particular. It seems like a, perhaps a very watered-down version of a rental ordinance may be 72-hour notice required prior to an eviction, something like that. Did you see cities that had programs that were notification-only?
I'd have to, well, see, the city of Concord was the one that was at the $29. It had notification, but it also had, I believe it had a cap. So, now, the cap was pretty high, as I recall. I mean, it wasn't a low level, so I think it was pretty close to what we already have for, what do you call it, no-fault evictions. So, I think Concord was probably the lowest level I saw.
And sorry, the cap is in reference to which part of the?
Of the, the rental increase, sorry, the annual rental increase allowed.
Got it, okay. But I'm not talking about rental increases. I'm just referring to if someone is going to be evicted for an at-fault eviction, they are late in their rent, or the landlord had otherwise determined that there's some other reason why they should be evicted, were there cities that just had a notification to the city policy?
In these cities, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Concord might be the closest one to that level, so I'd have to go back and take a look.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Marr. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Beulah?
Kind of a point of order. I was looking at the agenda packet that I received, and I gotta admit, I was a little taken back to here that the funds had been dispersed, this first $100,000. It was my understanding, based on the agenda packet that I had received, that we were going to get information tonight to make a decision as to whether or not that was going forward. Did I miss something there?
Yeah. Councilmember Beulah, the direction from City Council at the August 5th meeting was that $50,000 would go to Enough For All and $50,000 would go to Someone Cares. And if Someone Cares was not able to receive the donation, the staff would come back with a different recommendation for other organizations.
And is there a reason that wasn't in the agenda packet that I received? And I'm just hearing now for the first time that the dispersment has been made.
The City Council provided direction to the staff at the August 5th meeting to move forward with a donation of the $100,000, $50,000 to each organization, and should there be any issues with the organizations receiving the funding, then we would come back to the City Council.
And also, if I can just clarify, at the writing of the report that you received, which was probably at least two weeks ago, maybe a little longer than that, we were, we were, we had engaged the organizations, were waiting to hear back regarding their scope of services, but between the date of publishing the staff report and today, we received the scope of services, and we were able to cut checks to the organization. So, all of that has been satisfied since the printing of the agenda report.
And then possibly a question for City Attorney. So, August 5th, I was out of town. I wasn't present. There was a decision made to allocate $100,000 of public funds to a private nonprofit. Am I correct on that?
It was two private nonprofits, but yes.
All right, so $100,000 of public funds. Was that properly agendized, that type of action, where we were going to distribute and allocate $100,000 of public funds, properly agendized for, so that the action taken on August 5th was appropriate?
I do believe it was. There was a recommended amount, and I know there was discussion about the source of where those funds would come from and what the recommended organizations were. So, I believe it was correctly agendized.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. I may have some more after public comment.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have any questions? Member Reynolds.
Thank you. I may have a couple more. So, excuse me, on, on the question of tracking rents, this is something that we've talked about a number of times. Usually, our conversations are on the, the lack of data to really understand what's happening out there. What do we know about the level of compliance with current law related to rate increase or evictions? Is there any information provided in terms of just statewide analysis or county analysis? And what do we know in terms of Costa Mesa?
No, in our research, we weren't able to find a lot of good data. In our conversations with others, it was noted that that's why the cities created the registries in the first place, because they needed their own tracking process. There's nothing from the courts. I could defer to Nate Robbins, who's been kind of working on some of this, but I think he knows the difficulty it is in kind of tracking this information and identifying it.
Yeah, if you have anything to add, I'd be happy to hear it.
So, the, the only thing I can speak on are the phone calls and emails that I get from our constituents. As far as I know, there's no data, there's been no research done as far as statewide compliance with the rent cap, which is currently at either 10% or 5% plus the 12 months prior CPI, which means the current level's 8.9% statewide is the most that any rent can be raised in a 12-month period. But I do receive several phone calls, I'd say probably maybe five or six phone calls a month, from residents that have received rent increases from their landlords, and they're asking questions about if the limits are lawful. I'd say probably half the time they're not, so maybe just a couple of times a month, I have to reach out to landlords, let them know what the law is, and then mediate that situation between the landlord and the tenant.
Do you have any sense of, you said five, about five to six phone calls a month, do you have any sense of what fraction of the sort of, how that represents similar activity citywide? Like, is that 100% of potentially at-fault or inappropriate evictions? Or do you think it's just a tiny drop in the bucket? And I, you know, please share what's, you know, anecdotal versus what data that you know.
Sure. I think that there's probably a lot of rent increases that go on that are never reported, and I know that because there's evictions that go on. Illegal evictions happen pretty frequently, and the tenants either don't know to contact the city, they're scared to contact the city, or for whatever reason, they're just not reaching out for help. So, I can only assume that the same thing happens with rent increases. The people that reach out, I wouldn't really feel comfortable even guessing what percentage that is. It's, I just know that that's what we get.
And how do you know that illegal evictions are happening frequently where residents don't know how to reach out?
Because we hear after the fact. Lots of times, I'll get a phone call from, say, there's an apartment building with 10 units in it. I'll get a call from one resident that says, "Four tenants, four of my neighbors have already moved out. We all received letters from the, from the owner. Is this a lawful letter?" And it absolutely is not. So, I know that four tenants were forced out illegally. Luckily, at that point, we're able to call and mediate the situation, inform the landlord of the laws, and usually, well, at this point, it's 100% success to stop the illegal eviction, inform the landlord of the rules. The landlord either complies or rescinds the notice completely, which happens a lot as well. But once the city gets involved, it's, everything ends up great for everybody. The tenants get the support they need, the landlord gets the support they need. It's just when people don't know to reach out that they can get taken advantage of.
Okay. And is it, it's still, I'm still sort of surprised by this, but I, I think I understand it. Do we have no idea how many evictions are issued in our city each month, each year?
Right.
Unless, unless a resident proactively calls us about it?
That's right.
Zero information.
That's right. So, back in November, well, prior to that, say, maybe August of 2023, when, as the council remembers, we had 65 families that came to the city and said they were being no-fault evicted. My colleagues and I, mostly Sergio and I, did a lot of research to try to see if we could gather that information to present in that staff report, and we heard unequivocally from the Superior Court that they do not release that information. And at this point, they're really the only entity that would have that information, as unlawful detainer lawsuits are filed with the court.
Yeah.
That's the data that, that they can collect, but they told us very directly that they will not release that information except for on a case-by-case basis when ordered by subpoena, which the city attorney can probably attest to. So, at this point, we can only get one case at a time, and there is no aggregate data that can be shared with the city.
Okay. That's, that's pretty remarkable. Thank you.
So, there is, there are efforts, there are efforts to change that, just so you know. There's some nonprofits, United Ways, working on it with legislation through the state. I don't think anything's on the books, but there are, there is some efforts to change that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested in some, some more information on that. And then, can you give an example? You said you, you'll find out after the fact that there was an illegal eviction. Can you just describe, like, you know, what, what is the eviction and why is it illegal?
So, typically, you'll have a landlord that does, that notices the tenant several different ways. Some will send a text. You got to be out in five days or 30 days or whatever it is. No paperwork, just a text. So, they'll, some will send emails. Some will actually file paperwork. It's like maybe a 10-year-old form that doesn't even contain the, the current requirements. Some will include some good information, but they'll leave out some of the other requirements. I, what I'm finding is the majority of landlords aren't acting maliciously. There are a couple that, you know, it feels like they're being kind of caught trying to do this maliciously, but for the most part, it's just ignorance, lack of information. And so, when I call, they're very amicable to rescind the notice, do everything lawfully, or just rescind it completely and not evict the family at all. So, it's just really improper noticing is usually what the main reason is.
Is there any consequence for improper noticing, other than it gets rescinded?
No. It's, they've wasted their time, because now they have to start from scratch. So, if they give a 60-day notice and the tenant comes to me on day 59, they're going to have to rescind that notice, issue a brand-new 60-day notice. So, they're, they're wasting their time a little bit. Of course, there's the fear and the anxiety that the tenant faces when they get that type of notice, but there's no, there's no punitive consequences for issuing an invalid notice. Now, if they were to attempt to continue to pursue that, even after I've tried to step in, that's what the council allocated, the additional funding for the city attorney to potentially take those offenders to court, or whatever that's called. Yeah.
And in those cases, we're still relying on those tenants bringing us that information, though, right? So, if there is malicious landlord activity, which it sounds like you're saying you have seen evidence of, we only know about it if those tenants know to call you.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. And luckily, we have advocates in the community that will reach out to us as well. So, there, there's people out there looking out for this stuff, but unless we're noticed, we have no way to step in.
And then whoever can answer this, what are we doing now as a city to help get that information out to residents of Costa Mesa? Information about their rights and, and that they can reach out to us for help in making sure that any notices they get are, in fact, legal?
Sure. So, we do outreach through the school district. We do outreach through flyers. It's on the website. Meetings like this, of course, just letting the public know, our advocates out in the community. We, of course, have outreach workers that work specifically with families and individuals, so all the, the various nonprofits in the city know about our efforts. Really is a community-type initiative, just to get the word out.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Follow-up question?
Let me see if you've had us, or, remember, want to go first? Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Just, since we're on the, the rental topic, just curious, does anybody have any knowledge as to, when you look at the number of rental units we have here in Costa Mesa, does anybody have a rough percentage breakdown of how much of those are owned and operated by large institutional commercial outfits versus they're the mom-and-pop, one-in-two rental investment properties?
So, that question came up when we were doing the tenant protection ordinance. I believe Finance had that number. I don't know it off the top of my head. We were able to, I think, get a rough number. If I remember correctly, was it like 16%? I don't know why that number's popping into my head, but I'd, I'd have to go back and check.
16% on which side? The mom-and-pop or the institution?
Institutions. Yeah, the large corporations own, I think it was like 15%. It was a, I don't know, that number's sticking in my head, but I have to check for you.
And since it sounds like you're the tip of the spear in fielding these calls that come in, is it typically, and I think you said it appeared most of the time it was an innocent mistake or whatnot, at least that was your, your gut-level reaction, is that typically a mom-and-pop as opposed to the institutional property manager?
It's both. I'll get, you know, longtime corporations that own lots of properties that don't do it right. Just, just for a note, the law was amended pretty recently. I think it was April of '24, so just over a year ago. SB 567 was adopted, which amended AB 1482, which is the original Tenant Protection Act, to allow cities to enforce noncompliance with the law. So, it's a pretty new thing. Most landlords that have been doing this for a decade or even longer, I don't want to say most, there are some out there that don't know the updates. Pretty reasonable. I mean, there's a lot of laws that get passed every year. It's hard to keep track, but that's, that's the majority of what I do, is educating folks. So, I call, they're very thankful that the city of Costa Mesa provides that service, and we help them to do it lawfully.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you, Henry. Beulah, I have a couple of questions, really in four buckets, so I'll kind of just go a bucket by bucket. Just to preface to you, it's really about our own tenant protection ordinance, it's about SANA, it's about our city's implementation of a hypothetical, hypothetical registry, and then it's a bit follow-up on a couple of points mentioned earlier. So, let's start with our TPO, our tenant protection ordinance. In your opinion, how successful has it been in letting the city know when we're having no-fault evictions?
So, I think it's been wildly successful since we had, since the council adopted the ordinance in November of '23, so we're coming up on two years. We've only received 25 notices of no-fault evictions. Now, that's not to say that we've received 25 inquiries about how to do no-fault. I, I receive, again, maybe five a week for two years. There's a lot of those, a lot of questions, but actual submissions of no-fault evictions, there's only been 25. And like I said earlier, we had 65 in just a couple of months leading up to the November adoption of the ordinance. So, 65 in a couple of months and 25 over two years, I would say that's a huge success.
So, the ordinance is really good at preventing no-fault, no-fault evictions? It's kind of what you're?
It's good at preventing illegal no-fault evictions. I want to make that clear, because we do support landlords. Part of my job is to mediate and provide information and education to landlords to be able to evict lawfully, but then we also, on the backside, provide the social support to the tenants, so they have what they need to land on their feet and not become homeless as a result of the eviction. So, we help both parties.
And thank you for that distinction of the legal versus illegal no-fault evictions. When you get a notice for an illegal no-fault eviction, where the noticing is wrong, for example, or do you, do you find that they fix it and then it comes back to you as a appropriate no-fault eviction?
I would say, this is a guess, I would say 50/50. Half of the landlords rescind the notice and never re-serve it. They realize that what they wanted to do isn't legal, and they don't have the means to do illegal no-fault eviction, so they just rescind it completely. The other half have full justification to move forward, they just did it wrong. And so, I, I educate them, they redo the paperwork, they re-serve the tenants, but the beauty of that is, all the while, I'm able to connect the tenant with my outreach workers, so that they're receiving support, knowing that in 60 to 90 days, they're going to be evicted. So, it actually gives us more time to be able to work with the family. So, it's, again, it's been successful in so many different ways.
By when does the, and again, I think you mentioned that the tenant has to bring it to City Costa Mesa, correct?
Correct.
So, we're not, we're not expecting the landlord to bring it to the city.
So, the landlord has to notify the city within 72 hours of serving the notice to their tenant. What we find, though, is a tenant will come to us a week or two, well, sometimes they come to us the next day, because they're freaked out. "I just got this notice. Is this legal?" I'll usually wait the 72 hours, and if I haven't received the notice from the landlord, I'll reach out, let him know about the ordinance, the various requirements, but it is a requirement of the landlord to notify us within 72 hours.
Okay. Thinking out loud, because one of the options you can do is amend the TPO, do you find that landlords typically follow this law? That they are reporting when they do at-fault evictions?
50/50. I'd say half of them do, and the other half don't, but again, it's not, at least, in my opinion, it's not malicious. They just didn't know about this, the reporting requirement. As soon as I tell them, they'll re-serve the notice, they'll, they'll go into Tesla, they'll, they'll upload the documents and fully comply. So, we don't get objections. It's, they just, "Oh, sorry, we didn't know."
Okay. One idea I have, and asking a former question, is perhaps considering also including at-fault evictions into that TPO ordinance, where even if someone's evicted because they can't afford to pay rent, and they weren't able to come up with rent for the month, if we were to implement that type of system, do you think that landlords would actually share with this information about, about residents being evicted?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to update the ordinance, they would have to. One, one thing I would say to, to caution the council is, if someone doesn't pay rent, they're typically issued what's called a three-day notice to pay or quit. So, the ordinance now requires 72-hour notice to the city. That would mean that the, that the three-day notice to pay or quit has already expired by the time the landlord would be required to notice the city. So, there would just be some logistical issues there. We would have to require the landlord to notice within 24 hours, and that only gives us 48 hours to even do anything. So, if we're looking to actually do something about the eviction, there's some issues there. If we're just trying to collect data, then it, then it doesn't matter when they tell us, as long as they tell us. So, it depends what your goal would be.
Got it, and thank you for bringing up those, those, those points, because I think it's important for us to understand the full breadth of how it would be different for at-fault versus no-fault. I want to go a little bit to SANA, and I apologize to staff if you don't have the answers, say, "I don't know," because it's not our city, but I know they have a rental registry. So, I'm kind of curious, in our dealings with them, what is the main point? What is their goal with the registry? If we know.
I think it's connected to their kind of protections, the rent control that they're providing to. So, I think the registry is needed in order to administer that and track rents, because they require landlords to provide their kind of, you know, year one, they, they told everybody, "Tell us what you're charging in rent now," and then each year, landlords have to report, and, and those increases have to either be within the range, or if they're not, then the city, I, I'm understanding the cities and reaching out to them and asking them to correct that, so.
Okay. So, it seems like, again, to the best of our knowledge, their rental registry is primarily tied to their rent control ordinance. I see a lot of variety from the cities listed on the, on the agenda. Could we make the rental registry just be about reporting evictions? Could we make the rental registry just be about reporting evictions and nothing else? Like, is that something that we can do?
I think one important consideration would be, again, if we had the tools to maintain that database, what would be the intended purpose of keeping that information? So we would have to be clear about why are we collecting this information and what we would do with this information?
Thank you for that. Well, that's a good question, actually, to go back to you. What do we do with the data now we collect?
So the main, I'd say, purpose of our ordinance is to provide direct services to landlords and tenants. The data is so that when I come before you or people ask success rates or accomplishments, so that we can provide that data. But the data itself is just data. The true core behind the ordinance is to help the landlords and the tenants. So the data, again, in this situation, in our situation, is just purely analytical.
Got it. Okay. And I kind of feel like that would be where I'm more comfortable landing on, too. Cool. So just last two questions on things that came up organically. So you mentioned that the Superior Court blocks us when we ask for evictions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does having a rent registry circumvent that block?
It does not.
Okay. So then how would we collect that data? Does it have to be the landlord themselves sharing it with us voluntarily?
Yes, sir.
And that's similar to our current TPO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then you mentioned briefly that there's some legislation on Capitol from net away. Do you know what that legislation is? What's the status of it? Is it tangible or just an idea that's being proposed but not being carried?
As far as I know, at this point, it's just an idea. I know that there's pressure to institute the ability to collect that data for exactly what we're trying to do. It's very helpful to create systems and plan for the future. And without that data, it's hard to know exactly what the issue is, what the need is. So I know that there's pressure to be able to access that data, but currently, I believe there's nothing on the books, if you will. It's just an idea.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any more questions before I go to the public? Cool. All right. So thank you guys for waiting patiently for your turn. Now it's time for public comment. So we have two podiums, one to my left, one to my right. Everyone will get three minutes to speak on the item of this topic. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a buzzer. That does not mean you stop. That's your warning. At three minutes, I will ask you to stop. If you don't stop, I'll turn off your mic. So with that, we'll start over to my left. You have the floor.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Christian Lopez. I'm the Tenant Rights Organizer with Resilience OC. Today, I'm here to support the exploration of a rental registry here in the city of Costa Mesa and the possibility of better tracking no-fault evictions and all evictions that are occurring in the city. First, I think it's important to recognize that the city of Costa Mesa is over 60% renters. And I think also one question that keeps coming up is, why are we discussing, why are we discussing renter rights when this conversation is supposed to be about what we're doing about the immigration enforcement? And to answer that, I just want to say that most of our immigrant population here in the city of Costa Mesa are renters. So supporting tenant rights is supporting the immigrant community, and supporting their housing stability is important in supporting our immigrant community. Recently, we saw a string of unlawful evictions occur here in the city of Costa Mesa. Our rental registry would help prevent unlawful evictions from occurring by tracking, giving the city the ability to track all evictions. Our rental registry helps with creating transparency and providing data to help inform the city on what is the need regarding housing policy. Ongoing illegal evictions in the city show a need to not only explore a rental registry, but improvements to the Tenant Protection Ordinance. So besides exploring a rental registry, the city also needs to require landlords to provide advanced notice before serving eviction, eviction notices to their tenants. We better requiring landlords to inform their tenants of the rights that they do have. Establishing clear procedures for tenants who receive unlawful evictions and holding repeat offenders accountable. Our working-class Latino communities here in the city of Costa Mesa are facing attacks on multiple fronts, whether it's in their housing or with current immigration enforcement. Tenant rights are immigrant rights, and I hope today that you'll stand today with our immigrant community here in the city of Costa Mesa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before, again, I do want to share, you get to go on both podiums, but sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Perry Clitherow. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm asking you to direct staff to develop a budget and a plan for a rental registry. The Great Recession inspired me to study economics, and my research regularly focused on the high cost, on California's high-cost housing market. What I found is that renters, both commercial and residential, continue to face systemic injustices built into our laws and tax code. This registry will serve the people of Costa Mesa in three ways. First, a rental registry will uphold law and order in Costa Mesa. Too often landlords fail to meet their legal obligations, and those violations go unnoticed, undocumented, and unfixed. That undermines the idea that the law applies equally to everyone. I recognize that a registry will have costs, but let's put it in context. Costa Mesa's taxpayers spend nearly $70 million every year equipping the police department to uphold the law. In that context, a rental registry can be a modest proportionate investment to help uphold the law and improve our quality of life. Second, the data will be invaluable to the city council. You each bring unique perspectives to this, Daeus, but even the best judgment depends on sound information. California's land use regulations, tax policies, and tenant protections are notoriously complex, the result of decades of shifting policy objectives layered on top of one another like a bad lasagna. The housing crisis is not uniform. Every city, every block, and every building face different challenges. A rental registry will give this council a clear, reliable picture of what's happening on the ground so your debates rest on a shared set of facts and decisions reflect the reality of our residents' living. I actually, Councilor Reynolds, I actually researched your question in preparation for tonight. I found absolutely nothing about the economic damages of different violations that are common. Lastly, this registry will prove its value in times of crisis. Economic and financial shocks will come again, and when they do, policymakers must act quickly while reliable data is often slow to arrive. In 2008, the federal government underreacted and recovery was slow. During COVID, the response was more aggressive and more generous, but it was riddled with waste and fraud. With a rental registry in place, future councils facing those difficult moments will have timely, trustworthy information to guide targeted, effective actions that meet the needs of the community. In conclusion, the registry is not just paperwork. It's a tool for fairness, accountability, and preparedness. It will ensure the law is upheld equally. It will give you information to help you govern wisely. And it equips Costa Mesa to face future challenges with confidence. Thank you for your time and for your public service.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker?
Greetings and good afternoon, city councilor, honorable city council members. My name is Victor Vaytares, and I am speaking on behalf of myself, Resilience Orange County, and as well as a board member of a nonprofit that oversees multiple properties throughout the county of Orange as a board member of Orange County Committee Housing Corporation. I stand here tonight to urge Costa Mesa to adopt a rental registry. We heard earlier that there are 50/50 hit-or-miss, right? Good property owners doing the right thing and other folks that know that they can't break the law. I know for a fact I can speak on behalf of myself as an individual board member. If this was brought upon our organization that we protect tenants, we would abide by the law and do the right thing in making sure that we're not, you know, gouging people out of their prices, out of their homes, you know, getting their roots where they grew up from the community to move out and push them out. Right now, our city has no system. The city of Costa Mesa has no system to track who owns our rental housing, how often rents are being raised, or how many families are being forced out through at-fault or no-fault evictions. Without this data, tenants are left vulnerable. The city is left blind when making decisions about housing policy. And also making sure that we know how these policies are affecting or fluctuating in different parts of the community. We know that District 4 is different than District 6. District 2 is different than District 1. All of them are different, and we want to see also identify how these are going to be affecting low-income communities where they're being priced out of their homes, you know? So I highly encourage the city to be looking into this, you know? And not just collect data of at-fault, no-fault, the price gouging, because there is price gouging happening out there. We've been organizing here for a couple of years already, several years already. And we're very grateful. I'm personally very grateful that you all are listening to all the constituents, the people here inside these chambers, because we are being affected. And I know that, you know, 26 of the last cases that, I believe, one of the workers here is dealing with, those are just people that know, that are proactively knowing, that are involved with local organizations, communities, and members out there doing a proactive approach. I know that some cities have proactive measures that the city can do to inform and to go out there and inform residents, not just the property owners, because some property owners are like hit-or-miss, right? Well, hey, this tenant does not know the rules, does not know the law. That's how they're getting away with it. So why would we not want to have data, more data? You know, this is how we make decisions based on evidence-based data. And that's why I leave it at that. Data does matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker?
Hi, Mayor Protemp and City Council. My name is Roberto. I'm with Resilience Orange County. And immigration enforcement actions and immigration raids are having an impact on people's ability to be able to go to work, to take their kids to school, to be out in open public spaces. And so it's not as though community members don't want to work. It's the fear of being arrested out in public is limiting people's ability to have steady income and pay the rent. I'm very thankful for the food distribution efforts that Councilmember Reynolds is leading with the city because in talking with the community, one of the first things that they cut to be able to meet the rent is their food budgets. And so right now, you may not be seeing the evictions, but the evictions are coming as people start, more enforcement is going to come. We just had the Supreme Court ruling yesterday. And so I just want to make the connection between how immigration is impacting evictions. I also want to talk about if, I know the staff rapport made it so, the rental registry to be so daunting and costly. If all you're going to do is update the Tenant Protection Ordinance, then yes, include at-fault evictions. But something else that leaves room for the city to intervene is the 72-hour notice. You're only receiving an eviction notice 72 hours after the fact. So if you move that notice before an eviction happens, then you're able to intervene when there are unlawful evictions. As in the example that we gave, one of the community members was evicted, but that was an unlawful eviction, and so the families had already left. So leaving no room for the city to intervene. So if there is a no-fault eviction or at-fault eviction, having enough, notifying the city before delivering that eviction would give the city time to review this, whether the eviction is lawful or not, but also intervene. I know we're low on rental assistance funds, but you're able to at least identify how much the city should be allocating towards rental assistance funds. And you're also creating a systematized way and transparency between landlords, the tenants, and having the city have greater oversight over these actions. I just, I just hope that you really consider and address the evictions in whether that is the creation of rentals, registry, or stronger updates to our current Tenant Protection Ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brooke Gray. I'm a Costa Mesa, longtime Costa Mesa resident. I live in Mesa Verde. I am a District 1 constituent. I am here to support the rental registry and tracking the no-fault evictions. I'm also an organizer with Food Not Bombs. We hold community events. And recently, I've heard numerous stories of families being impacted due to the immigration raids. And when the breadwinner is kidnapped or removed, it leaves families there to fend for themselves, children, mothers. If you update the protection, this TPO, it will give the city the opportunity to step in and help these families. I think society is measured in how we protect the most vulnerable people, and I think it's important that Costa Mesa shows leadership for every member of our community. So I urge you to step up and show leadership and strength. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Margaret Sharp. Some of you in the Daeus know me. I wanted to thank Arlis Reynolds and Manuel. You've helped me in the past, and I really appreciate that. Basically, I'm here to support the at-fault registry, but I'm mostly here to, we really need some rental assistance because so many people are going through stuff. And it's not a matter of them not looking for work. I got work. I usually was making $72,000 a year. I got laid off in January 2023 because of a business downturn. I looked for work. I'm an older person. I have 15 years of experience in my field. But with the job search engines, the AI that just discards people, and then there's recently a report, 30% ghost jobs. And then, so I, you know, I couldn't find work, and then I went for the low-hanging fruit. Okay, so I went to Michael's, and I went to TJ Maxx, which is where I work today. Okay, both of those places, they start you out, you know, at a fairly, you get, you know, it's a minimum wage, but you get decent hours, and they gradually cut it down and cut it down and cut it down. Okay, and that's not about enough. But then they hire new people. They won't let you go to other stores to get more hours, and then they hire more people. And so, and what they do is with the hours, they'll schedule you different every single week. You're like 10 to 2, 6 to 10, whatever. And then if you want to get, try to find some, you know, space where you could get another job, they say, "Well, if we, if you, if we do that, then we're going to have to cut your hours." So there's the business side of what the businesses are actually doing, and this is a huge trend. I talked to people at Michael's. I talked to people at TJ Maxx. I talked to people at Target. So it's not a matter of not wanting to find a job, but you can't bind those jobs. So anyway, I want to talk to you guys afterwards, but I'm just saying, I had a roommate. He caused a cockroach infestation. I had to have him move out. I struggled for three months since June. I managed to fight for myself for June and for July. I got, finally got rental assistance. I've called 30 different places in this past month, and they keep referring me to somebody else, to somebody else, to somebody else, and give me false hope. And so now I have an unlawful detainer. They're taking me to court. Here's the information that they want me to fill out. I have like five more days. Otherwise, they're going to default on me. I have been trying for three months, and I've been trying for several years to get a job. But with the way that the system is working, it's broken, and I'm doing the best I possibly can. I just need a little help so I don't lose my home. I have a...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you ask someone from the city team to help out right now? Next speaker, the floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff. Thank you for being here. I urge you to do the exploratory work into a rental registry so that you can accurately explore the benefits, risks, and limitations of doing so. I'm a scientist. Policies have to be driven by data. We can't fix what we can't see. And evictions connected to the immigration raids and intimidation hit immigrants and working-class folks in our city first. Tracking this data gives us the real information and tools to hold people who are doing harm accountable. accountable. And adding to the very important dots that Roberto and others have already connected regarding the immigration enforcement, we know that with increased fear the residents are facing regarding ICE, there's evidence that both undocumented and documented residents disengage with community and government resources out of fear. So those voluntary calls that we were hearing about earlier, those might decrease because people are not feeling safe to call that number. And I think that is an important point for us to keep in mind as far as the benefits of standardized data for this important way that we can keep our residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, city council. My name is Sean Drexler. I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, District Four. And I want to uplift all the previous speakers' comments, which really emphasize the many reasons why a rental registry would be beneficial for us. It's clear that a rental registry would create the transparency and the data needed for the city to take meaningful action to protect vulnerable tenants, including the tracking of all evictions, including at-fault ones. I really, really, truly appreciate the research that the staff went through looking into this. I read through it. And it, what I urge city council to do is to move forward, direct staff, you know, to continue looking for ways to make a rental registry happen. Sounds like work. It sounds doable. So again, I really appreciate the council for, you know, looking into this. If it's unclear exactly what the best way forward would be, you know, keep searching. It's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the audience, just because this is our first Spanish speaker, when someone speaks in Spanish, we give them five minutes to give time for the translator to translate their comments. So Juana, the floor is yours.
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Juana Trejo, y soy de Promotoras de Salud del Condado de Orange.
Hello, my name is Juana Greco, and I'm a promoter from
Promotoras de Salud del Condado de Orange.
Wellness promoters of Orange County.
Yo quiero dar las gracias al fondo que hay, que es de fondo de ayuda para todos. Porque aunque ustedes no lo crean, han salvado a familias de ir a vivir a la calle por la ayuda que se les brindó para poder pagar su renta.
Yes, I want to give thanks for the fund that is available. Is this correct? Just keep pushing. Yes, I want to give thanks.
I want to give, now you can hear me. I want to give thanks for the funds that were available to help our families not, you know, not be evicted and go to the streets. And this helped, the funds helped the rent.
Sabemos que también es ayuda, ayudó a personas que interrumpieron sus tratamientos de cáncer, de enfermedades crónicas, por el temor de salir y ser arrestados por migración.
Yes, this helped, also aided people that were having treatments for cancer. It interrupted those treatments for cancer and chronic diseases and people that were afraid to go out to the public because of the raids.
Sabemos que la situación ahorita es difícil para todos.
Today's, right now, this situation that we're living through is quite difficult for a lot of people.
Vemos con tristeza cómo hay demasiados departamentos que están siendo desalojados en nuestras comunidades.
It is sad to see, and it's sad to say that a lot of people are being evicted from their apartments.
No sabemos qué es lo que está sucediendo, si han dejado solo los apartamentos o los están desalojando.
We're not sure what's going on, if they're just leaving the apartments willingly or they're being evicted.
Nuestra gente vive atemorizada y no está reportando otra vez crímenes que están sucediendo en la comunidad.
Our public, our people are in fear, are in fear because there's a lot of crimes that are not being reported on the streets.
Porque piensan que al reportar un crimen van a ser detenidos por migración por no tener derechos.
People believe that if they report a crime, they're going to be detained for not, for being illegal, for not having papers.
Y eso es bien difícil porque nuestros niños están caminando la mayoría solos a las escuelas todos los días.
This is a very difficult situation. Our children are walking to school by themselves.
Pero queremos darles las gracias a ustedes por no formar parte de esa violencia estructural que sufren nuestras comunidades.
I want to thank you, council, for not allowing this violence to happen in our streets, that it's a systemic violence.
Nuestros niños y los jóvenes son el futuro del mañana.
Our children, our teens, they are our future for tomorrow.
Y por ello luchamos día a día por seguir aprendiendo cuáles son los valores que tenemos y la dignidad sobre todo que no sea pistoteada.
¿Y la qué, perdón?
La dignidad de los valores de las personas que son vulnerables.
And through our children, we are learning, we are learning how to have values, how to have dignity and defend people that are the most vulnerable.
Por eso estamos aquí agradeciéndoles por todo lo que están haciendo.
And so we're here today to thank you all for all that you're doing.
Porque esa caja de comida ha llegado en el momento adecuado.
Yes, the meals, the food have come at a very, very essential time.
De familias que han tenido días sin comer en esta nación.
Especially for families who haven't had much to eat.
Así es que muchísimas gracias y esperamos que podamos seguir trabajando juntos para poder tener un futuro mejor.
So I want to again, thank you, and I hope to collaborate with you all so we have a better future.
Gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Trejo. This is everyone's last chance in the chamber to come speak on the podium. Okay. Now we will go and hear from the public via Zoom. For those of you on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand function on your screen. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and like to speak, press star nine to raise your hand and star six when prompted to begin speaking. City Clerk, is anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First speaker is phone number ending in 613.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Yes, hi, good evening. I'd like to speak out against this registry. My concern is that government is getting too big. And people are too reliant on the government for doing things that they're supposed to be able to do for themselves. You know, my heart goes out to people who are being evicted. But at the same time, you know, being an adult means that you have to know what the rules are and how to protect yourself. And when you completely rely on the government to take care of you, you relinquish your responsibility. Now, I will say, I'm not a fan of some of these groups that work in our community for personal reasons. I think they're spreading some messages that aren't good, as you look into their nonprofits. But I do appreciate that they are educating the residents on their rights. Again, we don't need to be reliant on the government. We need to be reliant on ourselves. And this seems to me as we're just putting more and more eggs in the government's basket. I don't want the government telling me what I have to do and all in my business. You guys are in enough in California, and you want more control. And it doesn't stop. You know, and again, like I said, my heart goes out to the people who are getting evicted. But at the same time, when you're spending, you know, you're making a big investment every month, you should know your rights. You should know how it's obtained, you know, what you can do, whether you're being evicted fairly or not, what you should do if you're not being evicted. But putting the responsibility on the government to intervene, no. You know, at some point, people are going to have to fend for themselves. In California, we're heading in the wrong direction. We're creating such a nanny state where we just run to the government when there's a problem. I also, you know, the other concern is you're going to put a cost on the landlord. Well, the landlord is going to put that cost under the tenant. You know, there's a lot of landlords are barely making it with their payments because of, you know, they're just barely making ends meet. So, you know, I would hope that we don't add burdens to the landlords. I do appreciate that the city does offer education for the residents who need help. Again, I oppose this. I oppose anything that gives the government more, makes them more needed in the community. We don't need that. We need less government. Thank you.
City Clerk, anyone else?
Next speaker is Patricia, please.
Hello. I think you said Patricia, but are you referring to Priscilla Baltazar? Yes. Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Priscilla Baltazar. I am a resident of Costa Mesa, and I am in District Five with Arlis. I am a new resident, but I have, I was born and raised in Orange County. I love this area, and I love the people who live here. I also just want to give my sincere thanks and gratitude to city council. I think the work that you do is very complex and difficult. And you have done things that are great for the community recently with the donations of $100,000 for the community. So I'm very proud of all of you. And it sounds like a complicated issue than regarding the rental registry, but I have full confidence in all of your ability to analytically and intellectually assess the situation to figure out a transparent and just way of documenting information that is critical to the city's ability to help out the community when it comes to evictions. I fully support a rental registry. I think that it's not only beneficial to tenants, but it's also beneficial to landlords because it allows us to document the real and legal reason for eviction. And it lets us be more fair and transparent and accountable. And I think that we know that some of the community members that are getting hurt the most are obviously immigrant community members, low-income. And it seems like there's also ignorance and a lack of updated infrastructure. So I think it's a win-win for everyone. Maybe it won't be easy, but I believe in all of you, and I'm so proud of all of you. And thank you so much. That is all for me.
Thank you so much. City Clerk?
The next speaker, next speaker is the individual with the Samsung phone.
Yes, thank you. So there was a speaker before me in the chamber who said that we don't know what's happening illegally that's not being reported. And I would like to say that I have recently experienced that. UDR, which please look into all the illegal things they have gotten in trouble for because they own so many properties in Costa Mesa and across the country. They were charging us late fees illegally. State law says that if the due date falls on a weekend or a holiday, you cannot be charged a late fee until the next business day. And they wanted us to sign up to pay online, but wanted to charge us $80 to do so. So those of us that did not want to pay that $80 every time the due date fell on a weekend or holiday, they would charge us a late fee and say they did not have to abide by that law since they gave us another option to pay. Somebody finally went forward and sued them for that. The state got involved, and we all got refunded that money. But immigrants are not going to want to come forward with that to sue them or to speak up. So that's just another way immigrants are getting screwed. So I really do support any renter registry. Furthermore, somebody else had mentioned that the majority of Costa Mesa is renters. And the majority of the city council does, did not campaign to renters. Nobody ever wants to address the renters. They go to the homeowners. So please focus on renters. They are what make our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, individual on their iPhone, please.
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carmen Ramírez. Vivo en el Distrito Dos. Vivo en Costa Mesa por más de 30 años.
Hello, my name is Carmen Rodriguez. I live in District Two. I've been living here for more than 30 years.
Ramírez, mi apellido es Ramírez. Y yo estoy a favor porque muchos de nuestros vecinos están siendo desalojados sin culpa. Están recibiendo cartas de desalojo. Y desgraciadamente, por tener miedo a llamar a la ciudad, se van sin decir nada.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that a lot of our neighbors are being unjustified evicted. And so a lot of them are leaving without saying anything.
Ay, nuestro distrito de año por mesa está perdiendo estudiantes porque se nos están yendo de Costa Mesa porque ya no saben cómo rentar aquí, o tienen que buscar otros lugares. Y desgraciadamente, están llegando cartas que no son legales, y ellos no entienden y no saben a quién acudir para que les ayuden.
Yes, and unfortunately, a lot of people are leaving Costa Mesa, looking to live in other places. They're receiving some letters that are not quite legitimate.
Hay personas que han recibido esa carta, y precisamente en Costa Mesa, en el Distrito Dos, en Filmore, han habido seis familias que están haciendo desalojadas. Cuatro ya salieron, quedan dos ahí, que están luchando día a día para encontrar un nuevo departamento para poder salirse. Y no piden nada gratis, sino que ellos trabajan dos trabajos para poder pagar su renta. Lo único es que necesitan ayuda de que sea legal el desalojo.
Yes, and already, there's been six, these people live in District Two once again. And there's been six families that have received eviction letters. Four of them, four families have already left, with two remaining in the area. They are struggling. They are working hard so that they can find, make ends meet. They don't receive any help, and they are working hard for this. But we do request that they do get some help and assistance.
Muchas gracias por tu trabajo que están haciendo como Mesa Directiva, y nosotros confiamos en ustedes, confiamos en Costa Mesa. Gracias.
Yes, and I want to thank everybody for all your efforts and your work that you're doing. And I trust in you guys to do what's best. Thank you.
Hi, the next speaker is Michaela, please.
Hello, my name is Michaela, and I am a current resident of Costa Mesa in District Two and also a former committee member on the Act of Transportation Committee. I deeply care about my friends and families and community members who are at risk for these targeted kidnappings, which are cruelly based on nothing more than the color of their skin, their accent, even their names alone. Thank you, city councilmembers, for allocating $100,000 to help them. However, I am here to ask you to urgently allocate more money as the administration As the administration and ICE agents have already begun increasing the frequency of their kidnappings, so too must we increase necessary support and funding for the families being ripped apart. These are families in need of financial support for their housing, food, and legal expenses. People are being targeted and kidnapped and their loved ones, who rely on them for shelter, food, medical care, are left to pick up the pieces. These are partners, children, grandparents. Um, $100,000 is only $1,000 for a, for 100 families doing the most basic, kind of stretching out the, 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 the funds. Um, how much does the most basic living expense cost alone per month per person? This is unsustainable in a time of increasing urgency and puts the city at risk for showing its community just how barely they are valued by their city. Uh, these funds are going to run out and help only a small fraction of what is actually needed to stop evictions and provide support. We can't only talk in finite support like this. I know for a fact that Costa Mesa can do better. Um, I am also asking the city to support the rental registry and to closely document the previously mentioned evictions within Costa Mesa. As it is possible, there are families facing evictions because the main income earner of their household was kidnapped. Additionally, I ask the city council to contract with a local and specialized immigration law for, law firm or center, uh, such as possibly the UC Irvine Law School's Immigration Racial Solidarity Clinic to aid these families being targeted by ICE. In the same vein, I am also urging the city to join the ACLU Perdono Lawsuit Against Racial Profiling and Roaming Cowardly ICE Patrols and Detentions. I hope, Costa Mesa city council members, that you show that you are willing to not only be a leader in supporting your community, but an effective leader as well. Thank you.
Hello, the next speaker's iPhone, please.
Buenas tardes.
Dame un momento, por favor, para agarrar acá la tercera.
Adelante. Okay, mi nombre es Blanca Monasterio. Vivo en el distrito tres. Um, mi tema era sobre los jóvenes, pero ahorita que están comentando de las rentas, nos pasó algo personal. Hace dos meses que estaba pasando la fuerte de las regradas. El dueño de los departamentos nos subió 200 dólares. Nunca había sido tanto y fue en el tiempo que no trabajábamos.
Yes, hello, my name is Blanca. I live in District Three. I'm here to talk about teenagers, but now that we're talking about rent, I wanted to, um, let you guys know what happened. It was a personal, um, some, uh, personal item. Two months ago, when we had, um, the heat of all the raids, um, our landlord raised our rents. They raised it to $200, something that has never been seen before. Adelante.
El miedo de nosotros fue reclamar o preguntarle al dueño porque el miedo de nosotros es que nos desalojen. Y fue difícil, pero gracias a Dios salimos adelante y ahora sí que preferimos, um, tratar de trabajar más y pagar esos 200 que salirnos y juntar dinero para la renta, luego el depósito, volver a empezar. Fue difícil.
Yes, and, um, in our community, the ones who were facing this, um, rent hike, we were afraid. We were afraid to, to talk to this with the owner and to report this. Um, because we didn't want to leave our, um, our houses, our apartments, to go, going to look for a new apartment. And that's why we worked hard so we can, uh, make ends meet.
Um, gracias. Una de las cosas también que no me quiero salir de la comunidad de Costa Mesa es, me, no sé, tenemos 20 años trabajar, perdón, viviendo aquí en Costa Mesa. Mis hijos están involucrados con la policía de Costa Mesa, um, y una pregunta también era de, um, no sé cómo se llama el, el, el parque de fútbol que está, el farm que está en la Fairview. Adelante. Recientemente, uh, mi hijo tiene 18 años y está en el Cal State Fullerton en el colegio y fue a practicar ahí para tener condición para el fútbol. Y a mi hijo, a mis hijos y a mi esposo los corrieron del farm, de esa, de ese, a cancha de fútbol.
Uh, yes, and I don't want to, um, get away from the topic, but I've been a resident for 20 years in Costa Mesa, so have my children. Um, they are currently collaborating with police or in some sort of program, uh, with the police. And I just wanted to state, there was a situation that happened. Um, there's a park on Fairview. And one of my kids, who turned, recently turned 18 years old, is a Cal State Fullerton alum, uh, not alumni, but student. And anyway, he was practicing at the, um, soccer fields there when all of a sudden they, he got kicked out. He got kicked out and my husband got kicked out.
Mi pregunta es, ¿hay algún parque que, que tengan disponible abierto para los jóvenes? Que es que tanto necesitan. Sé que es difícil, pero necesitan algunas, hay algo para ellos que puedan usar. El, la, el parque de fútbol es el que está, uh, siguiente de Costa Mesa High School. Pero como creo que lo privatizaron.
Uh, yes, so my question is, is there a park that is available for students, for teenagers, to play soccer? Um, it is difficult trying to get access to these, um, fields. And I know next to Costa Mesa High School, there's a fo, uh, football field, a soccer field. But, uh, recently, I believe it's been, uh, privatized. Thank you.
Es todo, muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ashley, please. Ashley, you may speak.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Ashley Anderson. Uh, most recently, I've led the Orange County Eviction Diversion Collaborative. I was raised in Costa Mesa. I've been a renter in Costa Mesa for over 20 years. Um, one of the things that, um, I wanted to echo, uh, one of Trios' comment earlier, um, was about public safety. I'm not sure that people are connecting the dots with the need to, the need of pushing our existing renters who have been in our community for years and years and years. Um, that literally creates public safety concerns. So in our neighborhoods where we had, um, renters that they, their rents were raised or their incomes were unstable during COVID and then rents got raised directly after, we continue to lose huge amounts of our existing neighborhood leaders, which impact the safety in, of our city. So it's not just, um, something that happens to people who are renting and it doesn't impact homeowners or anyone else or businesses. It directly impacts public safety. Um, one of the things I also just wanted to highlight um, is the disparity between some people who pay mortgages on their homes versus the cost of renting in Costa Mesa currently. So I have friends who own homes in Costa Mesa and their mortgage is 1,250 or 1,550, while rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Costa Mesa is starting to reach the $3,000 a month amount, which is not catching up in any way with the salary and wages in Orange County. The AMI, the, the, um, area median income for Orange County for this year for one person is $88,000. A majority of people, I have been watching people looking for jobs, are still being offered jobs that are $50,000, $60,000. And if you have any kind of instability that comes up in your family, including a status change if someone is undocumented and a breadwinner is taken, if there's anything that happens, people are not able to maintain their housing. So I just wanted to highlight that. I think the need for a rental registry is a win-win. It enables city leaders and nonprofits to understand which property managers may be buying up multiple properties on one street or in one neighborhood, which pushes out when they raise the rent. So they paint a garage door and put on some new, uh, light fixtures and call it a renovation. It's pushing out people who have been living there for a long time because the rents are going up so much and changing the entire dynamic of our longtime communities. The fear and the trauma that someone was...
I'm sorry, the time is up. The next speaker is iPhone. Hello, the next speaker's iPhone and you may speak.
Oh, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Veronica Ríos. Vivo en el distrito, distrito cuatro.
Dame un momento, Veronica, para darte los, los signetos.
Sí, este, pues yo, yo lo que opino es que sí estaría bien que pusieran un control de rentas porque conozco muchas familias que están aumentando la renta. Los, los dueños no hacen arreglos. Nosotros tenemos que hacer nuestros propios gastos, pero lo hacemos porque no queremos que nos corran. No queremos que nos desalojen por mantener malas las viviendas. Entonces tenemos que gastar de nuestro dinero también para hacer arreglos. Y otra cosa, yo también lo que veo que afecta a mi familia es que mi hija quiere estudiar por cosas de razones, nos están aumentando la renta y no puedo salvar como más dinero porque yo quiero una buena educación para mi hija.
Yeah. Hello, okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Veronica. I live in District Four, in the fourth district. And I do want to talk about rent control. Uh, I know of a lot of families who are struggling to, uh, pay their rent, especially rent is, uh, going, um, up. And, uh, there's families that even pay out of pocket. Uh, we, we pay out of pocket for these repairs uh, because we don't want, um, the conditions to remain, uh, in that way. And we're afraid of leaving. We're afraid of being evicted. I also wanted to talk about my daughter who's planning on studying, but currently rent is too high. Adelante.
Sí, pues ese es el motivo de que si hay un control de renta que ellos nos ayudarán con eso, sería grandioso porque no tendremos que estar como, con un estrés. Ya viene el año que se terminó el aumento de renta y ahora cuánto va a ser? Porque no, como no hay ningún control ahorita, puede ser 100, 200. He conocido una familia que le subieron 800, pero era para sacarlos. Eso es como, no era culpa de ellos. Porque ellos sí quieren vivir en el lugar, pero como fue tanto, tuvieron que irse y andar batallando. Ya son unas personas mayores y de verdad que fue bien duro verlos cómo batallaron para poder encontrar un lugar digno y que fuera a su, a su capacidad y de su pensión, del dinero que ellos podían pagar.
Yes, and so my reason, um, for this rent control is that I, I want there to be help. Uh, having that help would be such a big relief. Um, there's a couple that recently got evicted. Um, they were evicted because they couldn't pay the $800 hike of rent that they forced them, on, on them. And so there's many families that are currently in that situation where their rent is going up $100 or $200. And we need to have something where it's a dignified, um, uh, rent that they can pay for.
Adelante.
Y también pues damos las gracias en nombre de toda la comunidad de la Chalimar por toda la ayuda que nos han brindado. Estamos muy agradecidos con todos los miembros, con todo lo que están haciendo por, por nosotros y, y pues eso sería todo y muchísimas, muchísimas gracias a todos.
Yes, so I want to finish in thanking everybody, also the community that has really, uh, stepped up to help us, all the members that are involved. And that's it. I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Inez.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Inez. Me gustaría probar, se probarán una ley que dicta el control de renta.
Me permite, señora, no se escucha bien su audio. Puede acercarse al micrófono de su computadora o su celular.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Inez. Vivo en el distrito tres. Y estoy apoyando que pueda hacer una ley, uh, de control de renta.
Yes, hello, um, currently, um, I'm not sure what her name is because it's hard to hear, but I'm here to speak to you about, uh, supporting a, a rent control law, please.
Um, no sé si en el distrito donde yo vivo están haciendo desalojados y los renteros están que me dan ventaja de todo lo latino o de nosotros.
No se le escucha, señora. Arrímese más a su celular. No se mueva tanto, por favor.
Disculpe, es que como estoy trabajando, no, no se escucha muy bien, pero quisiera apoyar más a la gente latina que están siendo desalojados y que no le, uh, están tomando ventajas sobre ellos en su vida de renta y no les quieren arreglar en los departamentos. Es todo, gracias.
Yes, I'm here to, I'm sorry, I'm currently working, so that's why the audio is pretty bad. But I'm here to support our Latino community, uh, in these evictions that shouldn't take place and this rent hikes that shouldn't take place, place. And, uh, just, that's all for now. Thank you.
Hello, Rob, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think everyone can agree that if you lose your housing, it's an extraordinarily traumatic event. And I don't think anybody in this city wants people to lose their housing or have housing instability. But I think that we have to caution against false promises and overpromising to a constituency that is genuinely fearful of these actions. The city is not the appropriate entity. It's just not. We have a structural deficit and we're not the subject matter expert. So are we thinking of hiring a staff to replace the many, many, many organizations that are out there, some of which I work with through my job, such as Fair Housing, Orange County, the Orange County Courts Clinics and Self-Help Materials in every language, the Community Legal Aid of Orange County, Stay Housed, Orange County, Public Law Center, the Orange County Housing Authority, the State Attorney General's Office, the State Department of Civil Rights. These are the organizations that have the subject matter expertise. They have the infrastructure and they have the staff to handle these issues on a much more relevant and focused basis. If the city wants to get involved in helping these folks, they can have a liaison or an ombudsman. But we should not be occupying this space. It is already occupied by far more relevant and skillful and appropriate entities on multiple, multiple layers. So I just urge everyone to be realistic in what we can promise the residents. And, you know, having a couple of city staffers or even proposing to hire an entire new city department to handle this and get up on the latest laws and regulations, I don't think is appropriate. I think it's an inappropriate use of our resources. I don't think the city should be inserting itself in contractual and legal disputes between residents and, and property owners. We can help, we can help direct people to the appropriate resources. So I would urge everyone to, to utilize those contacts, utilize those resources and get people the help they need and, and be cautious about trying to be everything for everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Now for their speakers.
Thank you, uh, City Clerk. With that, the floor is closed and I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I see Reynolds up there first. Reynolds?
Were we gonna have a opportunity to question? Because I thought we kind of went out of order and I reserved some questions with the thought that we were gonna come back to have the DIES respond.
So what we'll do now, Congressman Beulah, because we're now the section where we close, we'll have a comment. We'll get a, a motion on the floor and then you can ask your questions during that discourse of the, the motion.
Mr. Mayor, pretend, I, I need to do a little mea culpa and open my mouth and insert my foot. Um, earlier, Councilmember Beulah asked a question about the August 5th agenda. Um, I went back and looked at it. I would say that there might have been some question as to whether it was clear that we were going to, um, act on a financial allocation of that type. I do believe, however, it is properly agendized. It was on the second, it is this evening. And so I would ask that whatever motion is made, that it include ratification of the action taken for the donation of $100,000, $50,000 of that to, uh, uh, help me out here.
Enough for all.
Enough for all. And Soup Kitchen, is that right?
Someone cares.
Someone cares, Soup Kitchen. Thank you.
Yeah, I needed to make some comment, or is it?
Yeah, I needed to make some comment.
So right now we have a motion to be made by Reynolds. Have her make that motion first and then we can...
Mayor, can I go back to the city attorney on her comments just now, though?
Sure.
So I think the challenge is that we've now bifurcated this discussion. The reason the mayor is not here is he was conflicted out of a discussion specifically about rental assistance. He's not conflicted out of a discussion about donations, so how would you like to handle that?
We could certainly take the action with respect to the rental registry, which is the item that he does have a conflict on, and do a separate motion with respect to the donation that was previously, would be ratification of what you've already approved. We could bring the mayor back in before that action is taken.
Thank you. Okay, so there'll be two separate motions. Yeah, okay. Okay, in that case. So related to the discussion on at-fault evictions, I have a motion in three parts. One, to have staff bring back an update. Two, our tenant protection ordinance to require notice of any eviction. Two, have staff develop a proposal for a Costa Mesa rental registry modeled after Santana's rental registry minus the rent cap, which obviously we don't have an ordinance for. And then third, establish a network for renter solutions, so network for renter solutions modeled after our network for homeless solutions, with a focus on improving outreach communication to our renter landlord population and to help identify and propose solutions for key renter landlord challenges. Second.
Can you give a second on the... Thank you. All right, Congressman Reynolds, can you speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate all of the comments all around tonight and the information that staff have pulled together over the years and all of the work that we have been doing as a city and as a community to really wrestle with these issues. I think the point was made from staff and members of the community that we're talking about two-thirds of our residents in Costa Mesa. I think more than 65% of our population and what we learned from the most recent housing element cycle and the most recent data that we have is more than 50% of that population is rent burdened. I think it was a third severely rent burdened. These are fundamental housing stability issues that impact health of members in our community, stability of our community with ripple effects throughout. And we, you know, anecdotally have information about that there's probably a high percentage of illegal evictions happening. About 50% of the evictions that we are aware of, the best data that we do have was illegal. So I really appreciate the points made about, you know, there's illegal activity happening in our city and we're completely blind to it, and it's affecting potentially 60% of our population. It's, it feels irresponsible to stay blind on that issue in the position we're in and with the scale of people who are affected by that issue. And inappropriate to allow those infractions if we know that they're happening. So my proposal in three parts is really looking at ways, I think we're overdue in this, looking at ways to have some more visibility into what's actually happening affecting 60% of our population. And then create, use a model that has worked in Costa Mesa with our network for homeless solutions to bring key stakeholders together to work collaboratively on solutions to address those key challenges.
Thank you. Senator Mar?
Yeah, thank you. You know, we're talking about it anecdotally, and we've got some information from staff about what they're experiencing, but this question of the pressure that ICE enforcement specifically has put on renters is known across the state. Two months ago, Attorney General Rob Bonta had to come out and issue a statement specifically reminding landlords of their obligations under California state law to not discriminate on people for, on the basis of immigration status, to not discriminate on the basis of the language that they speak, to provide leases in Spanish if requested, also per state law. And I will tell you, every single one of those things, I at least, and I know Ms. Anderson who spoke earlier and a few others have anecdotal information, that that is happening in our city. There's a landlord, for example, that only allowed cash payments and didn't issue receipts. How convenient, right? Look, I am, I would like to say that I fully understand both sides of these issues, and I think we need to engage in education, but I am also not naive to the fact that there are abuses happening by people who have power against people who have less of it. And so if we can do something as a city council to proactively engage on that front, then budgets are statements of our values, and this is what our values are. So thank you, Councilmember Reynolds, for making that motion. I think I was struggling to figure out what kind of combination of words and what combinations of changes based on what we've seen in other cities are appropriate, and I think you hit the nail on the head, so thank you for doing that, and I hope my fellow councilmembers support.
Thank you, Congressman Mar. I think Beulah can get the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and members of the public. Yeah, a few comments. I was gonna ask some questions, but I think I'll just speak to the motion, and I'll be voting no on this motion. My concern with just going forward with implementing this registry, and it was kind of alluded to in the staff report, this is the first, and we heard it in some of the public comments, it's the first step towards a rent stabilization board, which is going to require staffing, it's going to require an entire additional department, entire additional funding, and it's going to be a step towards rent control. And that, it's, and I think one of the last commentators, Rob, who spoke, that's an area that is fully occupied in the state, and I don't understand why the city needs to inject itself and reinvent the wheel. I'm also concerned, you know, when I was elected, I was gonna speak for my constituents, and the renters out there have strong public advocacy, they have strong private charitable organizations advocating for the renters. You have the institutional and commercial rental companies that have the wherewithal and the finances, but you have a lot of mom and pop rentals who are one missed payment away from getting in trouble and losing their investment property. And that middle class just continues to get squeezed, and they don't have an advocacy. And I think the city injecting themselves into the marketplace and getting in the middle of the landlords and the tenants, it's, they're adequately protected, and I think it's a misguided approach that we're taking here. Okay. Those are all my comments.
All right. Thank you, Congressman Beulah. Congressman Gamaros or Pettis?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Protem Chavez, appreciate it. You know, too often, local officials like myself are pressured or seemingly pressured into making statements publicly about divisive national issues, and, you know, I've experienced that myself, you know, Steve Voice, Daily Pilot, people want me to comment, and I've chosen not to up until this point. And the reason I'm deciding to share tonight is because on August 5th, now it's become an issue where I'm starting to question how things have been put forward. I was, gave notice that I was, I had to be on the road the following day, the sixth, at four in the morning to get to LA, so I needed to leave here by 10:30, and coincidentally, Mike Beulah wasn't here either, and there was nothing on the agenda about this $100,000. I know the issue was, but the money was just kind of added. And I didn't learn about that until I watched the YouTube feed. So that was concerning to me. I'm not sure what to make of that. I don't want to think the worst, but I didn't like it. And we're currently in a structural deficit right now in the city, which means money is tight for everybody, and we are not a non-governmental organization. And that isn't said by me to be harsh, but that is not what we are. We are not the housing authority. We, you know, if we wanted to go down that road, I would have liked to have entertained, you know, more money toward Human Options, Second Step, which my mother used to be the director of, and give more money to women that are suffering from domestic abuse, or hire a security guard at the Motel 6 for the alleged three overdoses that have taken place there, or pay our police some overtime for that. Maybe veterans on the street that need help as well, but I'm not gonna put that forward because that's not our role. And my job, what I was elected to do, was to be a financial steward of the budget of this city, public safety, infrastructure maintenance, and that's it. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Pettis. Congressman Gamaros, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Is it, so are we past the point if I had a question?
You guys have questions.
Okay. So I would like to know if, within the context of this, is there anything that is stepping into or leading into rent control? Is there any language that talks about rent control? I hear silence, kind of like jumbo shrimp.
Gamaros, I can, or sorry, Councilmember Gamaros, I can comment that that was not part of the motion, and my motion specifically said, referenced the rental registry modeled after Santana's, but not including their rent cap. So just to clarify what my motion was. That's not part of the motion.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, because this definitely will dictate how I feel about voting on this. So just double checking with staff, there's nothing in this that's gonna signify rent control or be a step towards that in the future, is that correct?
Not per the motion that's being adhered to right now, unless, that would be a policy decision that the city council would have to decide on, and it's not, that's not what's being proposed in the current motion.
The city's ordinance currently follows the state law regarding rent control, which is what I mentioned earlier during Councilmember Reynolds' comments. It's about 8.9%. So we follow state law. There's nothing included in our current ordinance that controls rent raises. Again, we just fall back on state law.
Okay. I appreciate you explaining that. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. So, thank you so much, everyone, for sharing your perspective. Thank you, Members of the House, for making the motion. I'll be supporting the motion, but I do want to make some comments as I support it. So the first thing is, in a city of majority renters, I'm the only renter on the dais. Over 60% of our city roughly rents, but yet only one out of seven on the dais is an actual renter. And one thing I always tell folks who don't understand kind of the difficulty of being a renter is, your mortgage is stable for as long as you're in there or you refinance. A renter has a new mortgage rate every single year. And what happens as a renter is landlords typically will raise it the maximum they're allowed to. So I will be honest with you guys and say, as a renter, I have not found rent control to be very good for me as a renter, because I have known exactly the CPI level that renters can charge me, that landlord can charge me, and lo and behold, every year at the 12-month mark, I get the maximum rent increase. So I don't think that's the appropriate response, honestly, as a renter. And with that being said, as I look at this motion, there's really two things that I care deeply about. And I'll start actually in order of least important to most important. The two things, data. Just having the numbers to know what's going on is good for the city of Costa Mesa. It helps us make educated decisions, it helps us understand trends economically and see what's going on with renters, which, again, are majority of our city. But most important of all is this, to have the time to help folks that may need help. I think Congressman Beulah made a good point, that there's a lot of support systems for renters, and I think oftentimes we know there's not enough support for renters, but there are programs you can tap into or look into if we have enough time, knowing that someone can't afford to pay their rent. So for that, those are the two things that I want to see accomplished. So for that reason, I'm voting for this motion. Between everyone in the audience and me, I think the best response is updating our TPO, because as according to our staff, we cannot mandate folks give us the at-fault evictions per circuit court. So I don't want to be creating an environment where we're passing something, we're creating an infrastructure in Costa Mesa, but we still can't get that data. So I just want to share that's where I'm at as a renter. I think it's important we move forward with something today, and we reassess it down the line, because the truth is, this is very important for our community, and I'm happy to support this motion. So with that, I'd like to call for the question. And unfortunately, I'm not able to vote, so we might need to do it by a roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds, can you vote, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Now I'd like to bring the mayor in.
Councilmember Beulah raised a point of order with respect to the $100,000 donation the council acted on on August the 5th, with $50,000 going to Enough For All and the other $50,000 going to Someone Cares Soup Kitchen. And having gone back and checked the agenda for that day, I am recommending that the council act to ratify that decision, since there wasn't a disclosure on the August 5th agenda that there would be an expenditure associated with that item.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Chavez. Why, I said a lot before. Of course you can be heard, but I made the motion, so I want to make sure that the maker of the motion and the second get a chance. Yeah, I said a lot about this before. I think there's a tremendous need that's caused, and it's a very acute need, so I'm glad that we voted before to address that need. I thought it was very appropriate and happy to ratify it. Do you have anything to say?
No, I think you said it very well, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm very happy that we did approve this. Questions on to whether or not we should have waited to ratify the vote, but I think overall, the intention is well-received and definitely needed in our community.
Councilmember Beulah.
Thank you. And since this is my first crack at this motion, just a couple of questions. The Enough For All charitable organization that we've distributed funds to, what are their typical sources of fund? It's a private-funded charity?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you mind if I respond?
No, you may.
There's a church in Costa Mesa called Redemption Church that has set up a fund that allows donations from anywhere, from anyone, and then they direct where those funds go.
Okay, so they receive funds from anyone, so private individuals who desire to support this cause have the ability to donate directly to them?
Correct.
And do they also have the ability to apply for federal government grants, state grants?
I'm not sure that the church uses that mechanism for the Enough For All.
So you don't know?
I don't, no.
And do we have any idea that if without this $50,000, they were on the precipice of going out of business and being underfunded?
That was not the case.
Okay. And same line of questions for Someone Cares. Do they have the ability to be direct funded by private individuals?
I believe so, yeah. I know I've donated to them before individually.
And I guess at this point, I'll speak to the motion since it's been first and seconded. Again, I think when we are in this budget crunch, if you will, I think we just came through a $3 million shortfall last year, we're looking for about a $9 million shortfall this year. You have these wonderful charitable organizations out there that have access to private funds. The public at large has not prohibited any way, shape, or form. If they're passionate about this issue and they want to be supportive, I encourage them to donate directly. But again, I think we're getting outside of our lane here, and we're borderline becoming an activist council, and we're gonna be drawing unwanted attention to this council, and I think it's gonna be a law of unintended consequences. And so I'll be voting no on this motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Does any other council member wish to be heard? Okay. Let's call for the question. Do we have to do a voice vote?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Councilmember Pettis, please.
This is for the ratification of the one.
Okay. Motion carries 5-2 with Councilmember Pettis. And Bealy voting no.
All right, so we have one more item on our new, on our agenda tonight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
This is the update on options for legal assistance for residents and potential participation in lawsuit challenging roaming immigration enforcement patrols. Presentation by Ms. Hall Barlow.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, the council previously requested that we bring forward some options for the City Council to consider a potential legal assistance program for the immigration enforcement issues, and also consideration of our participation in the Perdomo lawsuit, which has challenged immigration enforcement patrols. Is the PowerPoint up?
There it is.
All right. We also looked into limitations on funding for these activities. With respect to the Legal Defense Fund program, we can move to the next slide. Whoever's controlling it, thank you. We looked at what the legal restrictions are. Obviously, federal funds or grants that are for specific purposes or restricted funds cannot be used for this purpose. We may use our city's general fund to fund legal defense programs. The options that we looked at were creating a city-run program, or assisting with funding of an existing program using an outside partner. We don't currently provide immigration-related services through my office, and we would run the risk of creating conflicts of interest between the city and the city attorney's office if a program was provided directly by the city attorney's office. Having a separate city-run program would basically require you to start from the ground up with services that are already provided by existing providers. So it appeared that the most cost-effective approach, if the council wants to move forward with this, would be to partner with existing organizations that already provide immigration legal assistance, and we have identified several of those. We, I did note in recent, like, last week, a ruling of the Board of Immigration Appeals, which upheld an executive order which precludes issuance of bond to allow the release of detainees. This order specifically applies to immigrants who are present in the United States without admission. That is, people who were not admitted at a border with a visa or some other type of admission, even if they have allegedly overstayed their visa. Next slide, please. So we looked at a number of different service providers. We talked with the Public Law Center, the Community Legal Aid, Legal Aid Association of California. The Community Legal Aid is basically an umbrella association. We also have spoken with Immigrant Defenders Law Center and identified a number of other providers that are currently partially funded by the State Department of Social Services grants. The Public Law Center is willing to enter into a contract with the city. They serve residents who are at the, at or below 250% of the federal poverty level of income, and that is adjusted by the size of the household. Community Legal Aid is not available to provide services except for very restricted services. They could partner with us to provide the services, but they would be limited by their federal funding rules. They also have financial income-based eligibility requirements. Immigrant Defenders Law Center has been very active. They are currently partnering with the city of Santa Ana. They provided me with their agreement with Santa Ana. Their agreement with Santa Ana allows them to serve both residents of Santa Ana and also employees who work in Santa Ana. But they would be willing to partner with the city of Costa Mesa to provide services to Costa Mesa residents, with whatever appropriate limitation the council would direct. Both Public Law Center and Immigration Defenders have a vast experience in providing services to a whole range of different immigrant, immigration-status individuals, whether they arrived with or without a visa, whether they're entitled to different kinds of exceptions through crime victims, domestic violence victims, that type of thing, and both provide deportation defense. The Legal Aid, I'm sorry, Public Law Center was 250% and Immigrant Defenders Law Center is at 200% of federal poverty level and below for the services adjusted by household size. Next slide. So, I'd be happy to answer questions about that, but first, let me give you some background on the Perdomo matter. This is the case in which both the Immigrant Defenders Law, Immigrant Defenders Law Center, as a party on behalf of some of the plaintiffs and on behalf of a class of potential plaintiffs, is one of several of the attorneys handling the Perdomo case. In Perdomo, there was a challenge to the roving patrols that we have seen with masked and armed individuals approaching car washes, Home Depots, bus stops, and the like, approaching people who appear to be Latino and questioning them, they hear accents, et cetera. The plaintiffs alleged numerous detentions that occurred without reasonable suspicion, including detentions of numerous permanent residents and United States citizens, at least one of whom has been detained more than once. The district court issued a temporary restraining order and made a determination that basing a detention solely on an individual's race, ethnicity, or apparent ethnicity, race, language, and location, and/or type of work alone or in combination, those four things, was insufficient to establish reasonable suspicion allowing detention of that individual. The Ninth Circuit upheld that temporary restraining order on August 1st. Yesterday, the Supreme Court was, granted, rather, a request for an emergency stay of that tiara made by the Trump administration. The decision was distributed to the council, be available to any member of the public who also requests it. There is a preliminary hearing scheduled on September the 24th of 2025 that will allow a more elaborate hearing process to determine whether a preliminary injunction is warranted in the case. It's hard to say how the Supreme Court's stay of the tiara may affect the preliminary injunction As far as this action is concerned, there are numerous alternatives. The, many cities have joined as parties called intervenors. That is, they have filed an action in intervention to represent either their own cities or their own populace. There have been both counties and cities that have done that. Some in Orange County, many in Los Angeles County, and Santa Barbara County, among others. We have also been, did we skip a slide? We have also been asked whether Costa Mesa wishes to participate in an amicus brief, which would be filed in connection with the preliminary hearing on September 24th with the city of Fullerton, which is not asking for any financial contribution for that participation. So the council can either decide to participate, either by seeking intervention, by directing amicus support, or simply receive and file the report. And with that, we recommend that the city council provide us with direction on legal defense and consider whether and how to participate in the Perdomo litigation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so just before I go to the council, get all their questions, I have my own questions. But you said preliminary hearing. You meant preliminary injunction.
Yes, I'm sorry, the preliminary injunction hearing, yes.
That's different.
Yes.
And, okay. All right, council, you have any questions?
I've got a few.
Yeah. Councilmember Bealy, we'll start with you.
Sure. On page 4, the organizations that we could potentially partner with, Public Law Center, Community Legal, are those all privately-funded nonprofits?
Community Legal Aid is actually partly publicly funded, which is why they have the restrictions on how they can use their funds. Public Law Center and Immigrant Defenders Law Center are primarily funded by private entities and donations, but they also provide services to public entities, like through their contract with Santa Ana.
Okay. And I believe you commented that if we were to partner, that would be, we'd use general fund monies, but how certain are you that if we were to partner by, through use of general funds, to an outside third party that is opposing the federal governments and federal government actions, that we will not be putting any of our federal funds, federal grants, as to, that we receive for other programs here in the city at risk?
Well, I can't say what the federal government would do, obviously, but there is no legal prohibition on our use of general funds for this purpose. Many other cities have provided this type of program and similar programs for various unsungary other activities. The, including, for example, rental assistance and eviction protections and other things. The way that the deportation defense actions are going right now is that in the absence, if they're dealing with someone who, for example, didn't come in with a visa, who would not be entitled to bond under the most recent executive order and Board of Appeals ruling, if they were unable to obtain humanitarian parole or other kind of release through ICE, they could file a habeas corpus petition. Many cities and agencies that have entered into these type of programs, so far as I know, none of them have been told or challenged by the federal government that it will jeopardize their federal funding. But I'm just a lawyer, sir. I can't guarantee anything.
Well, no, you just need an argument. You mentioned some general funds. Some other cities have allocated funds to rental assistance and some of these other things, but are you familiar, or are you aware of a situation where general funds were used directly to assist a third-party litigation firm against what we're contemplating doing here?
Specifically for, for defense of deportation?
Sure.
Well, Santa Ana has been doing it actually for several years. They have a contract with the Immigrant Defenders Law Center. The most recent one is for $750,000, I believe, but it appears that they have had a contract in place with them for several years to provide similar services for their residents.
Okay. And then, moving on to Perdomo, a couple of questions. You say there's currently a number of cities already have joined that litigation?
Yes.
Okay. And would that be, any ruling in that case, would it have the same impact or no impact on City of Costa Mesa, whether we join or don't join?
Yes. The only way that an action would separately impact Costa Mesa is if there were some specific activity that were taking place in Costa Mesa that was not taking place somewhere else, that would be alleged in an intervention complaint, or if there were some sort of damages complaint that were being filed by the city.
And so, unique to Costa Mesa, but the general allegations, the general legal theories being pushed forward, Costa Mesa will be adequately covered with other cities already in the case?
This case does currently cover the entire Central District, because that's the jurisdiction of the court. So, yes.
And it would be kind of similar to what we've done when Costa Mesa shouldered the burden of the Ohio House case that we're all familiar with, and we picked up the legal fees and the costs, and other cities have benefited as the result of that ruling.
Correct.
Now, the Supreme Court decision that came down just yesterday, is it a fair statement that the 6-3 majority determined that the conduct engaged in was not unconstitutional, per se?
I don't know that I could say that, because there's only one concurring opinion, and the other four justices didn't give any explanation. What they did was, they stayed the action. There is a legal standard at play, which is that there has to be a showing of irreparable harm to the government in this case to issue a stay like that. And there has to be some likelihood in their minds that the government would prevail ultimately. But it's hard to say exactly where that will come out at the end.
And did you read Justice Kavanaugh's concurrence, obviously he was just speaking on behalf of himself, but as telegraphing that if the district court were to approve the injunction, that they would grant writ and they would reverse it?
It certainly seemed to suggest that, yes.
He was pretty direct about that, wasn't he?
Yes.
Okay, I've got nothing further.
So, thank you, counselor. I think next up is Councilmember Marr.
City Attorney, can you clarify whether an RFP is required, or is it your belief that so these firms are so specialized that we could direct staff to engage in a contract with one of them?
I believe that under our purchasing policy, if we are looking at multiple firms that provide the same service, and yes, they're pretty specialized, that we would be able to make a selection. I can tell you that the relative cost per client is roughly the same as between the Public Law Center and the Immigrant Defenders Group, based upon what they've told me, you know, what it costs on average, because obviously, every case is different. But I believe we could meet our purchasing requirements.
I agree. Under the procurement municipal code section, professional services does not require an RFP due to its specialty.
Thank you.
I think we had a question by, it's a member Pettis.
Yeah, it was kind of a double question. I'm wondering how many other legal cases we joined amicus or as intervenors in the past. And my second question, kind of similar, would be, did we join in any of the legal challenges against the housing mandates in Sacramento as interveners or in amicus, or did we consider that? And why not if we didn't?
Well, I can tell you that we have supported amicus briefs in a number of cases over the years. Typically, what happens is, for example, the League of California Cities will get someone to author the amicus brief, and then various cities will participate in that. I believe that we participated in the Boise case, but not the Grants Pass case. There are, I don't have a list right off the top of my head.
I can add a couple. So, we were a party, we participated in the... So, we were a party, we participated in the, in the case where we were trying to get rid of the RENA allocation that was brought by SCAG, and we were a named participant. I'm pretty sure, I don't know if we were a named party or an intervenor, probably a named party. And then the other time, I remember distinctly that we participated in, and I think it's probably before all of your time, even Kim's time, is there was an issue about needle exchange on the west side of Costa Mesa, and we, I specifically remember, took and had an emergency motion at noon one day for the purposes of joining in a case to, and join the needle exchange with the County of Orange.
Yes, that's correct.
So at least those two, you know, we, we have participated in, and I'm trying to think whether we did any other amicus briefs. I can't remember.
I know that we have in the past.
Two for sure.
Mayor, before your time here, but I don't, I couldn't give you a list right now. Be happy to go back and dig that up and provide that.
Okay, do you have any other questions? Okay, good. So, you want, you have a question, Mayor?
I have one, just one question, mainly regarding the providers. So, are we able to like limit the scope of work they do? For example, can we say we only want to focus on X or Y and only X and Y?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I got a question, a few questions. So, if, let's assume for the sake of discussion, we were going to join in with Fullerton, Irvine, or whoever other, other cities that want to do an amicus brief, what would be a reasonable budget for us to do just that, to join in an amicus brief with other cities?
The city has not been requested to contribute any financial support.
Okay, so they would pay for everything, and we would just put our name on it?
Yes.
Okay, and so that, that's the amicus option, and then in terms of, and the first question I'm going to ask is a rhetorical question, obviously, I think most people know the answer to it. When somebody is arrested for a crime in the United States of America, and they don't have enough money to pay for a lawyer, does the government pay for a lawyer?
Yes.
And, and that's under the Constitution, right?
Correct, Sixth Amendment.
Sixth Amendment to the Constitution, and we have whole departments in both federal and state law, and in every state, I think, called public defenders, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that's guaranteed to every person in the United States, regardless of immigration status, under the Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, let's say somebody's at the U-Haul on Newport Boulevard, and somebody puts, sprays them with tear gas and takes them away, federal government takes them away, because they're being detained for immigration reasons, purely immigration reasons and no crime, do they get a public defender?
No, sir.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. If no one else has any questions, let's open it up to the public. Whoever's ready first, you have the floor, you're ready first.
All right. Let me begin by saying thank you for your obvious commitment to serving all your constituents. My name is Betsy Denzmore, I'm a resident and a retired business owner in Costa Mesa. I'm also the former executive director of a foundation in Illinois which focused on grants for legal services organizations. Everyone agrees that drug dealers, thieves, and other bad actors should be taken off our streets, but the vast majority of detentions and deportations currently taking place are of law-abiding workers, entrepreneurs, and caring parents who love and serve this city. Once in the clutches of ICE, individuals and families cannot work, cannot care for their terrified children, cannot pay their bills, and most certainly cannot participate in our local economy, which is producing, for example, lower sales in restaurants, grocery stores, and other retail outlets, and major drops in attendance at events like the Fish Fry and the O.C. Fair. Moreover, immigrants are a significant part of the workforce in agriculture, hospitality, construction, and healthcare, all integral to the Costa Mesa economy. The need for funds to support legal assistance is enormous. When residents are detained, current federal practices make it very difficult for them to get out, even when they are citizens or permanent residents. I am sure you've all read some of the horror stories. If someone has an expired green card or is petitioning for asylum or a visa, the process for obtaining one can take years, and opportunities for dismissal are rampant unless they have a legal counsel to guide them. I've made you all copies of the most recent Customs and Immigration list of forms and fees because it provides a window on how complicated and expensive the process is. We already have too many cases of people pressured into voluntary, that's in quotes, deportation because they have no access to counsel. By most estimates, 70% of the undocumented residents who contribute significantly to our economy, as workers, entrepreneurs, and taxpayers, have been here for at least 15 years. Right now, they need us to help them preserve their rights and widen rather than narrow the path to permanent residency or citizenship. Costa Mesa's economy, character, and vitality depend on them. Your approval of funding for emergency assisted assistance is deeply appreciated, and it is a Band-Aid on a very big wound. Next, I ask that you help heal the wound by allocating at least $200,000 so that residents who are wrongfully detained can have access to legal counsel. I further suggest that you create an advisory committee with community members such as myself to help set criteria for caseloads, and then retain one or more reputable legal services organizations to carry out the scope of work we align on.
Excuse me, ma'am, that's, that's your time. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roberto with Resilience, Orange County. In short, I, I support and applaud your efforts to join the Perdama lawsuit in amicus brief or other methods that you see fit for the city to join, but you should be able to denounce the Supreme Court siding on racial profiling, like you should denounce that as a city. As it relates to the legal service provider, Public Law Center, Immigrant Defenders are great service providers, the legal community is really great. Obviously, everyone's underserved, underfunded, so Cal Legal Aid, because of their limited, their grants, their federal grants, aren't able to support undocumented community members, and so that's just one, you know, little point that I would take away from them, but Public Law Center or Immigrant Defenders are great service providers that I would recommend to you. As it relates to the cases that you should prioritize, I would recommend prioritizing detained Costa Mesa residents, as well as Costa Mesa residents who have pending, upcoming immigration court, as well as providing consultations for Costa Mesa residents to better understand their immigration case. Following a major US Supreme Court ruling that encourages racial profiling and threatens due process rights, the City of Costa Mesa must take action to protect its constituents against warrantless immigration arrests and unlawful evictions. You all are faced with the harrowing reality and risks that many Costa Mesa residents and Orange County families are faced by this federal government. Constitutional protections like due process and equal protection under the law are being shredded by the current administration and the highest court. We call on the mayor and Costa Mesa City Council to partner with nonprofit legal service providers to provide removal defense, legal services for Costa Mesa constituents impacted by the callous immigration raids running rampant across the county. We call on the mayor, and thank you for giving direction on a rental registry, to comprehensively track all evictions impacting tenants. Resilience, Orange County, Costa Mesa Unidos, and Chamoy are grounding ourselves around un derecho a permanecer, or right to remain in our homes, our schools, and neighborhoods. Families are increasing, families are facing increased rents and threats of eviction, immigrant communities are living through constant fear and looming presence of militarized agents in our community. Now is the time for the City of Costa Mesa to act, and we're not alone. We were able to gather additional support from nonprofits who signed on. I want to name them as the Orange County Rapid Response Network, Chief Spa, Tenants Together, Peace and Justice Law Center, Promotoras de Salud, the California Healthy Nail Salon, Collaborative Public Law Center, Viet Rainbow.
You have, you have the floor.
Hello?
Yes, you have the floor.
Hi, council, my name is Julie. I grew up in the city and I'm also a current resident. I'm also an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, Mayor Stevens, Mayor Protem Chavez, and council members Marr, Gamaros, and Reynolds for approving the $100,000 towards resources to help families affected by the anti-immigrant ICE raids. From my firsthand experience doing outreach and spending time with community members, I know that there is a great need for assistance. Families have had the pillars, the breadwinners of their families deported, many others live in fear of being next, which has impacted people's willingness to work, because working and being outside increases the likelihood that they'll be snatched by masked men funded by our federal tax dollars. I, like a lot of other people in this room, feel outraged. Just this past Wednesday, several day laborers looking for work were taken from a U-Haul rental facility here in Costa Mesa. They use what we think are flashbangs to add further terror to their operations. Then yesterday, the Supreme Court backed Donald Trump's aggressive approach to immigration, which allows targeting people based on race, language, or profession. They are testing the limits of what people will take. We know from history that targeting of one group is a threat to all of us. They start off with violating the due process of immigrants, housing them in cramped and inadequate detention centers, and deporting and disappearing people to third countries, and if they can get away with that with no resistance, what's to stop them from escalating? Now's the time to start resisting and fighting back on every front. A lot of us in this room are doing community and political organizing, attending protests, ICE Watch trainings, council meetings, as well as volunteering to support those most impacted by the raids. We are doing everything within, we are doing everything within our power and capacity to fight back against these violations of our constitutional rights and attacks on our communities, so I am asking the council to do what I really think is the bare minimum in this fight, which is to resist on the legal front. I'm asking that Costa Mesa join the Perdama versus No lawsuit, and also that the city allocate money to an immigrant legal defense fund so that we can help our neighbors stay in the city that they have called home for years, if not decades. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, sir, you have the floor.
Hello again, my name is Perry Clitherow. I was educated in Lutheran schools in Orange County, including Christ Lutheran on Victoria. I was raised conservative, and until 2016, I was a registered Republican. During the 2012 debates, I remember expressing to my father that I hoped Trump would continue his political pursuits because I liked some, much of what he had to say in those debates. In 2016, the media spent a lot of time covering his campaign. I assumed they were exaggerating or taking Trump out of context, but Lutherans, especially those of us of German descent, carry a heavy historical burden. The failure of the church to stand up to the Nazi regime is a shameful legacy, so when Trump came to the Pacific Amphitheater in April of 2016, I took a friend and attended the rally to judge him for myself. We studied the speeches of Himmler, Goebbels, and Hitler in school. It was gut-wrenching to see the same hateful rhetoric used in my own backyard. He was hateful towards immigrants. The worst story he told, I'll share with you, was directed at Muslims. He slandered the service of General Pershing, who battled a Muslim ethnic minority while governing the Philippines. Trump claimed the general rounded up 100 clerics and had 99 of them executed with bullets dipped in pig's blood, sending the last man home to tell his people what happened. Trump concluded, "That's the kind of leadership America needs today," and he received a thunderous applause. After pause for that applause, Trump changed his tone. Three Estancia students stood in the back, about 20 feet from where I was sitting, quietly holding a few protest signs. He called them hooligans. The crowd became a mob. The students were surrounded by angry men who hurled water, beer, snacks, and slurs. My friend and I leapt from our seats, forced our way through the crowd, grabbed the students, and escorted them out of the venue. I entered that rally a Republican. I left opposed with all my heart, to the hate of the MAGA movement. MAGA is hateful, it's violent, and it's lawless to its core. MAGA is an insult to what the United States stands for, as your great questions highlighted, Mayor Stevens, and my Christian upbringing requires me to stand up and condemn their rhetoric and their actions. Today, federal agents carry the same cruelty I saw at Pacific Amphitheater into our neighborhoods. They make no attempt to detain people peacefully, sweeping people up indiscriminately, they don't do their paperwork, and families are unable to locate loved ones for weeks or months. The conditions at these prisons are deplorable. Inmates get little food and water, are denied medication, and don't receive changes of clothing. In violation of the law, they are refusing the visitation rights of congresspeople who would bear witness to their abuses. I ask you to authorize the use of revenue, of reserves, to support a few lawyers, to help families locate their loved ones, to understand why they...
That's, that's good, you got it, that's your time. Yes, yes, you have the floor.
We will be sharing our time. Good evening, council members and mayor, my name is Lesley, and I am a resident of Costa Mesa and a member of Chamoy. I just wanted to come up and mention that right now, some of us are facing difficult times, some even having fear of being in their own community, so this is why I ask that you approve this fund so that we can spend, so we can send a powerful message that in our city, we stand for dignity, fairness, and justice for all residents, no matter where they come from or how much money they make or they have. So, council members, I respectfully urge you to vote in favor of this immigration legal defense fund. Let's ensure that in our city, no one faces deportation alone. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor, my name is Emmeline, I recently graduated from Estancia High School. I'm also a member of Chamoy, and I ask City Hall and its people to stop mass deportation by approving a legal defense fund. I have seen how both kids and adults fear what could happen and what can happen. Many people aren't here with us today because they fear what is happening around us. With this fund, City Council can help those who are in need and give our communities hope that they are alone and that this, and with this, that we have the ability to stay together as a community. Thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Allison, and I'm a District Four community member and a lawyer practicing in the area of employment law. By allocating funds for legal defense and joining the Perdama lawsuit, the city has the opportunity to help prevent further trauma from happening to families in Costa Mesa. Unlike the criminal justice system, the government does not provide a right to a publicly funded attorney or public defender in immigration court because it's a civil matter. In addition to a need for legal representation in immigration court proceedings, there's a particular need for lawyers to file habeas corpus petitions in federal court on behalf of detainees to challenge the legality of their detention when possible. This is because, one, the traditional tools to fight detention in immigration court are proving difficult, even futile, when immigration courts sit under the executive branch rather than the judicial branch, and immigration judges are being pressured to become just another enforcement mechanism for detention and deportation. Two, the Board of Immigration Appeals, also part of the executive branch, recently upended decades-long immigration law by removing the ability to, for a bond hearing, which will subject migrants to mandatory detention, forcing them to litigate their cases while detained. This ruling by the BIA is binding on immigration courts, but not federal courts. Combining this with the fact that the big ugly bill proactively allows for the indefinite detention of migrants, including children, further underlines the need for habeas corpus petitions to be filed in federal court as a tool to challenge detention. This necessitates additional legal representation costs for victims. As to, as to the Perdama case, we are in a dark moment in history when the highest court ignores decades of well-settled precedent that reasonable suspicion must be based on an individualized objective justification, not a person's race. The court provided no legal reasoning, made this decision when the government provided zero evidence of individualized suspicion, while the concurrence justifying, justifies racial profiling based on mere probability and speculation. In addition to arrests made based on racial profiling in our county, we've seen ICE traffic people in secret. people in secret without due process or legal representation, most of which have found to have no criminal histories, including an attempt to traffic 341 orphaned children to Guatemala in the middle of the night over Labor Day weekend. ICE needs more accountability, not more power. This decision is incredibly dangerous and will have racist ripple effects far beyond immigration enforcement. As Justice Sotomayor warned, "Rather than sit idly by while our constitutional freedoms are lost," I dissent. If we ever want our civil liberties back, we must all dissent, and the city's joining of this lawsuit is one form of that dissent. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes, you have the floor.
Hello, honorable city council members. My name is Jackie Gomez, and I'm here with Chamoy, which stands for Changing Hearts and Minds of Youth, and I want to discuss the legal defense plan. These ICE raids have not only impacted us individually, they have affected our neighbors, families, and businesses. The streets are bare, and people are living in fear. Stores and churches are all empty, and children are scared for their parents. That is the issue with these ICE raids. They are tearing apart families, are inducing fear within our community. Residents are afraid to be out in public in the chance of them being profiled or questioned simply for the way they look or speak. Why are they supposed to feel safe when at the same time these ICE raids are happening, they are getting kicked out or evicted from their homes? At this point, it's no longer about being undocumented, and I'll call it out for as it is, it's straight-up racism. And we, as a community, shall not stay silent and tolerate it. We must recognize that ICE is taking harsh and inhumane measures against our neighbors and our family members, and for those that see otherwise, it's basic human decency. For those that don't know what it's called, it's compassion and empathy, caring for those around us. And I'm pleading for you, council members, to fund our legal defense plan and rental registry. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jackie. I'm a mother of Santa Ana, and I came to speak to the community here. This land is a hachiman. This is Tongva Nation. There were people here before you. You are an immigrant. Mike, you are an immigrant. 60% of this city do not understand how the land can be owned because it can't. We are at the late-end stage of a capitalist system that is broken. Our immigration system is broken. We know this. Our city has been under attack since 2017, when they installed a white supremacist pedophile in the office. We are currently giving evidence to this. Our supervisor is in prison for funneling money through his daughter's nonprofit. So when you speak of nonprofits, we know about this already. Our supervisor, he's in prison. We are at this fork in the road, Mr. Mike, where we were hoping for your concern and compassion and understanding. And so we're asking you to support the people of this city in care and compassion. 40% of our budget in Santa Ana goes to our police. They dress up in riot gear and they attack us. We know that you love it when ICE attacks us. We know this. By your votes tonight, you show which fork in the road that you're going down, and it's not with us. Costa Mesa is not allowed to come into Santa Ana and attack us in riot gear. Costa Mesa showed up to UCI on May 15, 2024, and assaulted students and teachers there and arrested 47 people. You get dressed up out of your desk jobs in riot gear to come and attack us. We pay your bill. We pay your salary. And you want to give us a hard time for asking for 100 grand? We are the richest county in the world. We broke off of LA County as Orange County to be able to solve a few issues. California went through its own genocide. There was an American genocide. You are standing on stolen land. So you don't understand what we're going through. So how can you represent us? A dog voted in the last election. The elections are rigged. We know this. So we're asking you to stand with us. That's it. There-
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, you have the floor.
Good evening, council members. My name is Itzalivera.
I'm Shahira Ayalar.
And I'm Kevin Gonzalez.
We're currently youth here at Costa Mesa, and we're also here with Chamoy, Changing Hearts and Minds of Youth. Families are living in constant anxiety, afraid to go to work, take their children to school, or even leave their homes for basic needs. This climate of fear weakens the fabric of our city, forcing neighbors into silence and isolation instead of fostering trust and safety.
We need our leaders to stand with our immigrant community, to recognize the harmful impact of immigration enforcement's presence, and to take concrete steps towards ensuring that our city remains a place where every resident feels safe, valued, and protected.
I urge the council to acknowledge this fear publicly and work alongside community members and organizations to create solutions that affirm dignity, trust, and safety for all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa. I have been a resident of Costa Mesa for over 20 years. Speaking is completely outside of my comfort zone. I don't want to be here. I have a migraine. It's so important. My mother is an immigrant. I'm a very proud first-generation citizen of this country. My mom came to this country on a boat. I'm here to support Costa Mesa supporting a legal defense fund and joining the Perdomo lawsuit. My grandparents survived World War II. I know what fascism looks like. ICE is taking our community members, our neighbors, our friends. They're not following the law. The level of fear in our community is horrific. Little children not knowing if their parents are going to come home, not knowing if they're going to have a home. I want to thank you for the actions that you have taken. I'm proud to be a Costa Mesa resident. It's been many years since I was a regular city council member, attending, or not member, but attending person, and it's a very different city council, and I'm very, very proud. Again, I encourage you to support the Legal Defense Fund and to join the Perdomo lawsuit. Stand on the right side of history, for crying out loud. This is important. This is what this country was built on. Bring us your tired, your poor. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. Again, my name is Brooke, and I am a District One constituent. Mike Bulley, I'm in your district, and I'm very vocal in the community. I think, I want to just firstly, I'd like to thank all the council members who voted in support of the funding to help our affected community members. Thank you for your courage and your strength and your leadership. I've gotten so much feedback from talking to people in the community, so thankful to you all. So again, thank you very much. I'm here tonight to urge the council to take action to support our community members by donating to a legal defense fund. I'm asking you to donate $400,000. Legal defense is expensive, and I think it's important we protect the most vulnerable people in our community. They are being detained, targeted by immigration enforcement, and as Mayor Stevens, you pointed out, there is a lack of legal representation in civil cases. These are not criminal offenses. They are not afforded an attorney, and these community members need our support. Right now, many of the people affected are parents. They have children. They are good, hard-working people in our community that have been living here for years, raising their kids, and contributing to our local community. They help keep our city running. Our community members are being targeted, and families are being separated, and this is devastating, especially for the children being affected. Kids are anxious, scared, and they're dealing with trauma of losing a parent. And this is not just an immigration issue, this is a community issue. When families are torn apart, it affects all of us and not just the individuals directly impacted. Supporting legal defense is not about making a political statement, it's about making sure people who live here and who are a part of our community are getting the fair chance they deserve in the system. It's about keeping parents home with their kids and getting them back to work, which ultimately strengthens all of us. I also urge the council to join the lawsuit, the Vasquez Perdomo case. This is critical because it challenges the aggressive tactics that ICE has been using to detain people without respect for their constitutional rights. If Costa Mesa supports this lawsuit, it's not a statement, it is an action that shows we stand for the civil rights of every resident. And it sends a message that Costa Mesa is a city that protects families and defends justice. By setting up a legal defense fund, Costa Mesa is also leading by example and showing that we value the rights of all our residents and believe in keeping families together. I ask the City Council to step up and support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, council. My name is Gere Ringon, and I'm a resident and renter in Costa Mesa. I would like to thank the council for your consideration on joining the Perdomo lawsuit and supporting the legal services that our undocumented population desperately needs. As we see ICE become more militarized, more emboldened, more fascistic, your constituents are continuing to live in fear, and they need swift action. With the recent attack on the U-Haul facility just down the street from here, utilizing flashbangs to terrorize and kidnap individuals, I think now is the time to take a stand. Now is the time to stand for due process and to combat the blatant racist policies targeting our Latino population. Now, I understand that there's a cost associated with implementing a legal defense fund here in our city, but there's an even bigger cost with having our community ripped away from us. Our immigrant community is what makes Costa Mesa a great place to live. In my opinion, signing onto the Perdomo case is the bare minimum that our city can do to stand up for our undocumented population. As City Attorney Barlow stated, our city has not even asked for any financial contributions, so please sign on and do the right thing. As Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." I believe that the council will do what is right and allocate funds where necessary to ensure that Costa Mesa residents can maintain their constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I failed to introduce myself last time. My name is Emily Glanton. I'm a homeowner in Costa Mesa, and I have extensive privileges, like many of you do, access to healthcare, access to education. And because of that, I'd like to ask you to allow me to speak from a place of extreme privilege, but also from a place that is guided by compassion and science. I want to also echo the thanks for the $100,000 contribution for the council members who voted for that at the most vulnerable need in a strategic and effective distribution manner. So, we've talked about the U-Haul incident, and I just want to explain my personal experience, seeing that, understanding what happened there. I drive by that corner most of the week. I drive my dog to the dog park, and I always notice the workers who are waiting for good, honest work there. And the other day, I drove by it, and no one was there, and I noticed it. I hadn't heard about the incident at that time, and I thought to myself, "That's really strange." But I kept driving because I was on my way. And then I saw the footage. And if any of you have not seen the footage of the incident, I really, really strongly urge you to watch it and experience your own humanity as you watch it. These were seven people who were attacked with those flash grenades that have been described and abducted. And my familiar drive will never be the same, but with all of my privilege, I will never experience that type of fear. And you white council members, you won't either. But countless Costa Mesa families, not just those seven, are now scared to be seen and scared to feed their kids. As a scientist, I have to look to evidence, not just emotion. The data are devastating. The Kaiser Family Foundation finds that these harsh immigration tactics spread trauma beyond undocumented families into households with lawful status, into children, and families avoid doctor appointments and schools, and opportunities are stolen by justified fear. And that's why tonight's decision matters. First, the legal defense funds. They're tearing parents from children with the ICE raids, and using city reserves for this is a safety net. We encourage you to support that wholeheartedly. Secondly, joining the Perdomo litigation against the ICE patrols and racial profiling so that we can stand in genuine solidarity with the other cities that are showing who is worth safety in our communities. Tonight, these are not just policies. They shape who feels safe walking down our streets, who dares to dream, and who belongs. So I ask you, will our city's story be one of turning away or standing up for every neighbor? Will your privilege help people? Or will you look away as they are harmed by racism and hatred toward immigrants? The data are clear, but the pain is clear, too. Data demands that we act, and I ask that you not look away. Your choices tonight echo the lives you touch, whether shattered by inaction or rebuilt with courage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. I'm Sean Drexler, Costa Mesa resident of District Four. Working people in Costa Mesa alongside organizations and local groups have come together and done really incredible work to support city residents impacted by the ICE raids. One of the most consistent challenges, however, has been getting impacted community members access to legal aid. Many Costa Mesa residents cannot afford attorney fees, especially when the household's breadwinner has been abducted by ICE. While there are incredible pro bono lawyers doing everything they can, they are at capacity, we have asked. That's why I'm so excited and grateful that Costa Mesa may become the second city in Orange County to create a legal defense fund for impacted residents. This is the kind of action that the residents have asked for. So thank you to the council members who have advocated and expressed support for this. Thank you for really hearing us and showing that you stand for the safety of all Costa Mesa residents regardless of status. And a huge thanks to city staff for all their research. It's great to live in a city with responsive representatives. A legal defense fund is what residents need to fight unlawful detentions and keep their families whole as well as housed. A legal defense fund is what's needed to help US citizens get their abducted parents back, to give residents some confidence to return to their places of work. Residents shouldn't have to choose between going to work and risking abduction, or between paying rent and having an attorney to help get their loved ones back. The impact ICE raids have had in Costa Mesa are felt at both a human and economic level. The real fear that keeps residents from leaving their homes even to run errands has a ripple effect on our local economy. I therefore urge the council to support and take bold action in the creation of a legal defense fund for impacted Costa Mesa residents. I'm very much looking forward to supporting y'all in getting this across the finish line. I also urge City Council to take action to participate in the Perdomo case, despite the Supreme Court's ruling. The case affects Costa Mesa residents. Costa Mesa residents should not be subject to racial profiling. No one should. But Costa Mesa residents are who you were elected to represent. We should not see ICE coming into our communities deploying flash grenades and stealing our community members like what happened at the U-Haul at Newport Boulevard last week. This is about prioritizing public safety, the safety of Costa Mesa residents, regardless of council members' individual politics. See this as an opportunity for the city of Costa Mesa to stand with its residents in defense of our civil liberties at a time when they are being stolen from us at an alarming rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and council members. Earlier tonight, Councilmember Pettis mentioned a structural deficit in the city's budget. But I just want to remind everyone that in the fiscal year 2526 budget, the city congratulated itself on exceeding its $5 million general fund reserve policy. And we know that city policy allows council to appropriate these funds for urgent community needs. I also want to remind everyone, and Councilman Bulley, that the organization chart in the budget doesn't show council at the top. It's the citizens of Costa Mesa. That's everyone in this room that's telling you where they want their tax dollars to We cannot keep asking people who live paycheck to paycheck to continue donating to mutual and legal aid. Or maybe you can ask your homeowners constituents, Councilmember Bulley, to donate. With that said, and with the Supreme Court ruling lifting protections against roving ICE raids, which allows ICE to stop people based on appearance, also known as racially profiling, I urges council to establish a legal defense fund. I was going to say 100,000, then I changed it to 250,000, but I support Brooke's 400,000. But we don't need to reinvent the wheel. These funds should go to trusted providers like the Public Law Center and Immigration These funds should go to trusted providers like the Public Law Center and Immigration Defense, who can act immediately. Families cannot wait for new city structures or slow processes. Time is everything when someone is detained. And let's be clear, this isn't new spending. It's a matter of using reserves as community protection, the same way we would in any other public safety emergency. Second, I ask that Costa Mesa join the Pedro Mo lawsuit. Cities across Southern California have already joined the lawsuit in Orange County. That's Anaheim, Santa Ana, Fullerton, and tonight is on Irvine's agenda. Costa Mesa should stand alongside them, showing solidarity and standing with the vulnerable. We get that Costa Mesa cannot stop federal actions. We get it, you're not stopping the kidnappings. We can't either. But what you can do, what you must do, is protect your residents from these impacts. By joining the Pedro Mo case and creating a legal defense fund, Costa Mesa can continue to lead the county in a positive way and leave a legacy. Pave the way for other cities to act. It's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do. We are reliving the worst parts of our country's history. So do the right thing.
Yes, you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sandra, and I serve as the Director of Policy and Legal Strategy at the Orange County Rapid Response Network. Costa Mesa's history with its communities of color has long been marked by exclusion and hatred. Just a couple of weeks ago, white supremacist agitators disrupted these very chambers when the issue of immigrants came before this body. Three years ago, the beloved Poderosa mural, a wall painted by Alicia Rojas to honor 11 strong women of color, was defaced with the words "white power." And nearly two decades ago, this city leadership proposed training local police officers to enforce federal immigration laws. Yes, the city has made progress since then, but we are not yet where we need to be, especially for a city where nearly 40% of its residents are Latino. And in this critical moment, we must act with urgency to ensure dignity, defend due process, and protect the rights of all residents to remain and thrive. Costa Mesa has often been overlooked in the larger conversation about ICE enforcement. Since our organization's founding in 2017, we have worked to change that narrative. In fact, the very first cases we supported involved a Costa Mesa family whose son was detained twice by ICE, once under the Trump administration and again under the Biden administration. This year, we have seen enforcement escalate further. In February in Costa Mesa, joint task forces between ICE and Homeland Security Investigations carried out arrests along Wilson Street, Adams Avenue, and Shalimar Drive, only to name a few. In the months that followed, HSI began using Costa Mesa as a testing ground for welfare checks that, in practice, bypass residents' Fourth Amendment rights. And just last week, our team responded to the arrest of seven day laborers on Newport Boulevard. These workers, simply exercising their rights to seek employment, were met with excessive force. Let me be clear: our communities are not war zones. They are not places where communities are hunted. This city is not a staging ground for dehumanization. To those who say that speaking out or demanding transparency will only place a bigger target on our backs, I say this: Those targets have always been there. Rights are not protected or won by bowing our heads. That is why I am here today, to urge the city to establish a legal defense fund to protect its vibrant immigrant families, and to join the Pedro Mo v. Noem lawsuit to defend the dignity of our communities. The time to act is now. Costa Mesa has the opportunity to lead in South Orange County. Together, I believe that we can keep our families together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Rachel. I am a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, and I am just here to express my support for funding legal defense specifically for Costa Mesa families who are being affected by immigration enforcement. The legal system, as we know, is expensive and very complicated to navigate, and legal support would help Costa Mesa families stay together and continue working in and contributing to our community. I would also ask that Costa Mesa, at a minimum, join in in filing an amicus brief in Pedro Mo to support the civil liberties of all our residents, immigrants and US-born alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pues buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juana Trejo, y aquí estoy de nuevo una vez más, pidiendo que tengan misericordia por la gente que representan. Hemos hecho como cartas poder junto con Manuel Chávez para que las familias dejen sus apoderados. Y se oye decir muy fácil una carta poder, pero yo daría la mitad de mi vida por no escuchar los testimonios de cómo se sienten las personas cuando están cediendo sus decisiones a familias o amigos. Yo no me imagino cómo los niños pueden estar pasando por ese trauma al escuchar que sus padres ya les están diciendo que se tienen que preparar porque no saben lo que va a pasar en el futuro y que quizás se tienen que quedar con alguna persona.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Juana. Once again, I'm here. I want to ask you to please have mercy, mercy on the representation. I have been drawing up some letters with other families. They're, in a sense, power of attorney, power of attorney letters that indicate what the parents are pretty much giving up and the power they're giving up for others to make these very important decisions. I can't imagine the pain that these children have to live, the trauma that they're experiencing. Parents are now are being left to prepare for the uncertain future that these families will be left with.
Tenemos padres que están cediendo su patria por testa también, y los niños no entienden, no entienden que somos víctimas de un sistema estructural que no responde.
Parents are also giving up their parent rights, and it is hard for children to understand this system that is very confusing to them.
Yo escucho el temor de ustedes de hacer lo contrario de lo que dicta la ley, pero creo que ninguna familia merece ser separada por nadie.
And I know there's a fear of how you decide if you go against the law.
¿Qué dijo lo último, perdón?
There's no family that deserves to be separated.
Mi pregunta es, ¿cómo se sentirían ustedes si estuvieran de este lado de la línea? ¿Qué harían? ¿A quién acudirían? Nosotros por eso estamos aquí, porque sabemos que la ciudad de Costa Mesa lleva liderazgo en no hacer lo que todo mundo está haciendo, porque sabemos que aman el trabajo que están haciendo. Sé que tenemos dos personas nuevas que no están apoyando, pero tampoco los culpo. No saben cómo es el sistema, pero sé que los demás están haciendo muy buen trabajo, y yo me siento muy orgullosa de vivir aquí y de que ustedes estén haciendo el trabajo que están haciendo. ¿Cómo se sentirían ellos si estuvieran de este lado?
Yes, and my question to you is, how do you feel if you were to be in my shoes or in our shoes? What would you do? How would you seek help? I am here once again, and Costa Mesa typically is a good city that leads with purpose. And there's two people on the council that I know don't support us, and I don't blame you, because this is a quite confusing and complex system. But I'm very proud of those that do support us. I'm very proud. Thank you.
Dios los bendiga. Gracias.
God bless.
Melissa, please.
Melissa, you have the floor.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Melissa Shepherd. I'm an Orange County resident and a Director of Legal Services at the Immigrant Defenders Law Center, or IMDF. IMDF is a nonprofit social justice law firm and the largest nonprofit pro bono provider of deportation defense in California. We believe that no immigrant should be forced to face deportation proceedings alone. We represent immigrants in removal proceedings, including unaccompanied minors, families, veterans, and have developed and provided free resources on our website for those unable to secure legal representation. IMDF is co-counsel and plaintiff in the Vasquez-Pedro Mo litigation, challenging the racial profiling, warrantless arrests, and denial of due process by CBP and ICE, practices that not only violate federal law but also endanger the safety and dignity of our immigrant communities. These agencies continue to operate under a dangerous "detain first and ask questions later" mentality. Just today, we were notified that another US citizen was detained at a car wash. We are committed to this fight and won't back down, and we urge Costa Mesa to join us in the fight and allow our communities their constitutional protections. IMDF has led the way in Southern California to create a rapid response team and system as an answer to this administration's unlawful actions impacting our communities. We serve this very community time and time again and have received calls for over 1,300 community members who've been kidnapped by CBP. We've responded around the clock, seven days per week since June, when our community members began to be kidnapped off the streets by showing up at the local barber shop where a young man was barricaded in by CBP, at the detention centers where COVID and tuberculosis have run rampant in recent weeks, at the deplorable ICE processing facilities in Santa Ana and Los Angeles, where we have advocated for the release of people who are pregnant, on dialysis, and in the middle of chemotherapy treatment for cancer for more individuals than I can count. We have represented people in dozens of credible fear interviews, bond hearings, and filed habeas petitions for many of these community members detained in recent months. We are not new to this work. We are embedded in this community and committed to this fight. What we now need is your partnership. Cities across California have made the choice to fund immigration and deportation defense. Costa Mesa should be next. Join us in this litigation. Invest in the legal defense infrastructure that already exists and is serving your community. Help restore due process and protect your residents when they need it most. This is how you tell your community: You matter, and you are not alone. Thank you.
Who is it again?
Priscilla.
Priscilla, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you so much. This is Priscilla Baltazar. I'm in District 5. Thank you to the mayor and the council members for the great work and for approving the motion to donate $100,000 and the rental registry. That's really great. And I also am here to voice my support for the establishment of a legal defense fund and joining the Pedro Mo Noem lawsuit. Immigration cases, as you know, our mayor was asking, they're civil and they're not criminal, so that means individuals that are being affected, they have no right to a public defender, and they're left to deal with a really complex system that is very broken already, and it needs a lot of support. And this results in family separation, lost jobs. It destabilizes us, unfortunately. And I just, I really believe that a legal defense fund would help us have due process, and it would help protect our Costa Mesa residents who we value. And it's just, it's not about compassion. I wish it was, but it's also about fairness and economic stability. I think that immigrants are essential to our economy. They work in so many different types of jobs that we see them in construction, healthcare. We pay millions in state and local taxes, and Orange County alone, I think, contributes about $145 million annually. We rent and buy homes, we shop locally, and this is, we need to protect that and protect our community members who are our neighbors. And I also want to respectfully respond to a concern that I heard from Councilmember Bulley claiming that the council members of Costa Mesa are activists. I just, with all due respect, I want to emphasize that it's due process and not activism. It's about just governance and protecting the rights of residents who contribute so much to our community is not an ideology. It's about being fair and responsible. It's your constitutional responsibility, and especially as descendants of European people who came here illegally to participate in this land. I think that, like, we understand as fellow, like, people who come from a history of immigration, the need for, to immigrate freely and to pursue prosperity and happiness. And so I think it's just, it's very ironic. So I urge you to think of it differently. Our families are living in fear, and I just...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's it. You're cut off. You, when it got to three minutes.
The next speaker is Hallie, please.
Hallie, you have the floor.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much. My name's Haley Stoller Plaza. I am a resident of San Clemente. My children have, their father lives in District 1 in Costa Mesa, and I'm connected with a lot of nonprofits in Orange County. I'm a nonprofit consultant, social impact consultant, and I've worked in human rights and social justice for my entire career. I'm just here to uplift the voices of the folks that have, that have already communicated and share my support for Costa Mesa's commitment to a legal defense fund, comparing what the city of Santa Ana has done for the past couple of years at $750,000. That just is a drop in the bucket of what legal service providers need and what the expenses are for the needs that exist among the community members. So I would definitely support anything $200,000, $500,000. And I, what I really, really appreciate about participating in this experience at your city council meeting tonight is that you all are amazing. Your community is so activated, the city council members, you're so invested. Everything that I've heard is very intelligent, very fact-based, and I know that you'll make the right decision regarding a legal defense fund in your city. Also, I would definitely support you to join the Pedro Mo versus Noem lawsuit. The amicus brief participation, it is free. Amazing, it's free. There's nothing, of course, time is not free, but joining with Santa Ana, Anaheim, and Fullerton that have already stepped up, you will continue to elevate the, just, the reputation of our county, of Orange County, and I would appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Haley, thank you.
Phone number ending at 613, please.
Yeah, hi, good evening. You know, this is not a, this is a very emotional topic, and my heart goes out to the people that get caught up in this. But let's not forget that countries have borders and countries need to have laws that are enforced. And a lot of the language that I've heard used tonight misrepresents the situation that our country is in. You know, the last four years, we had a president, and I forget his title, but Mayorkas, through Mayorkas orchestrated the greatest illegal immigration that our country's ever seen. If you're curious about his impact and how he moved us along, you need to look into an article by the name of Michael Leon, who documented Mayorkas down the Pabellon Gap. article by the name of Michael Leon, who documented Mayorkas down at the Bari and Gap, promoting NGOs to help people get across the border. If I didn't live in this country and I wasn't born here, I'd do everything in my power to get to this country. But I also understand that I'm here illegally, and that's a crime. And the people that are saying that they're being arrested for no reason, that's not true. They're here illegally. And as hard as it is to follow the pill, if you break the law and you get caught, you get arrested. And again, this is a tough situation, and there's no winners in this situation. But do we just let the country go? Do we just let everyone in? I mean, what's the point of having rules and laws and they're not enforced? You know? And then I hear the use of the term kidnapped. They're not being kidnapped. They're being arrested for breaking the law. And when we misrepresent the situation that's happening, we create a narrative that's not true. And so, you know, again, I, my heart goes out to everybody. I'm so glad I don't sit on my dice. You know, my heart breaks for the families, you know, but also at the same time, I understand that laws have been broken. So, you know, not an easy decision tonight. I don't under, I don't think that a legal defense fund is going to solve anything. Sounds good, you know, but how much good can you do with that amount? You know, it's, I feel, and this is more of a publicity thing, you know, all the city councils used to do this, or the kind of feel of the new council doing this, you know? But again, like I said, this is a tough issue, and I just wish that we could, you know, we could have had a secure border the whole time, and we wouldn't be in this situation. But it wasn't the case. You know, there's something like 8,000 people a day over the last four years came through, came into our country. And so, we can't-
That's your time, Chris.
No further speakers.
Okay, closed public comment. I've got a motion. Okay, I want to establish a legal defense fund. I want to start it with $150,000. I want the, the motion will include entering into a contract with Immigration Defense Law Center as our primary provider, with Public Law Center as being the secondary provider to the extent we need more capacity for our clients. This fund would benefit providing access to justice to Costa Mesa residents wherever they're detained, and then anyone who is detained within Costa Mesa by ICE. The fund would be open to the public if they wish to donate to supplement the amount of money that we would allocate. The staff would report back when the fund gets to the point where there's only $50,000 in it, and the report would include what the fund has been used for and to the extent that that can be done without violating anything that's confidential. And also the further need for the fund so we could consider allocating additional funds. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, here's the reason I'm doing it. I mean, it's just simply, oh, and let me say this, so I don't know if you all know this, but I've got a script that I follow, and today was an interesting day because we're here on an agenda that's been, we basically just carried over for the, from the last meeting. So it didn't have "do the pledge of allegiance" on my script, but I had us all stand up because I wanted us all to say, "And justice for all." I wanted us to say that together. To me, this is a matter of access to justice, plain and simple. As I pointed out with my questions, if you are arrested for committing a crime, even if it's a crime you committed, even if you intend to plead guilty for that crime, and it could be a horrific crime, you get representation provided to you by the government under the United States Constitution, as our city attorney said, the Sixth Amendment. These folks that are being detained allegedly because they violated some immigration law, they have none of that. They don't have any access to justice. The government is taking them, but the government's not defending them. And so I've been a lawyer for 36 years, and I can tell you this, I cannot always win, and I don't always win. But one thing I always do is provide some peace to my clients. They know that they've got a lawyer who's got their back. Lawyers get a bad rap, but that's what we do. We help our clients in the darkest times, and people need that, whether they win or lose, whether they're guilty or innocent, because we're all guilty of something. So that's it. That's the basis of my motion. I hope I can get four votes.
Mr. Mayor, I sincerely apologize. I had to step out. Can you repeat your motion?
Sure. Start with $150,000 to fund it. Enter into an agreement with the, as the primary provider, Immigration Defense Law Center, as the secondary provider, the Public Law Center. The fund would benefit Costa Mesa residents wherever they're detained and anyone who's detained within the city boundaries of Costa Mesa. The fund would be open to donations by the public to supplement our $150,000. And the staff will report back with any nonconfidential information about the results of our expenditures of the fund when it gets to $50,000, so we can consider contributing additional funds if necessary.
Did you make a motion regarding Perdomo?
Oh, Perdomo. Yeah, good, thank you. Yeah, just to sign on to an amicus brief on Perdomo.
Thank you.
Second on Perdomo?
Of course.
Okay, second, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I was about to ask you to amend the motion in a friendly manner, but, all right, let's see if I can get through this. I love the phrase you said, "access to justice." I think for me, as a son of immigrants, as someone who grew up in Costa Mesa, in a time where it was very in vogue to be prejudiced against Latinos, and I'll just do a quick rap of how I grew up. I grew up seeing the parks closed up, rocks put in some, gays closed in others. I grew up being called an alligator in a swamp. I know very personally, even from the city, what it's like to be targeted. One of my hopes was that future generations would not understand my experiences and would not understand my trauma of that upbringing. It's been a very reflective year for me, in a lot of ways, to question myself and say, "Why is my inclination not to yell from the treetops? Why is my inclination to be on the ground scouraging and finding ways to navigate to find the fruit?" And I think a lot of that comes in the fact that I grew up being kind of told in this community that it didn't matter. And it was really heart-wrenching for me yesterday when I had students at my job asking me what the federal Supreme Court decision meant for them and their families. It was heartbreaking to say, "Quite frankly, it means it can stop you for just looking Latino, speaking Spanish, or anything. This is not going to solve that, but it's going to give us some bits of hope." Because I want to tell you again, and I keep going back to my district, because that's how I can explain to others what we're experiencing in our community. Every morning, with my girlfriend, I go on a walk at 6:30 a.m. We conclude at 8:00. Try to get our five miles of walking in, and I always have to walk by Pomona Elementary School. And I don't need to share how heartbreaking it is to see first, second, third graders walking to school alone. I don't think I need to share how heartbreaking it is to have multiple students go up to me at my job and say, "Manny, can you help me get a job so I can help my parents pay rent?" High school students who at senior year are not thinking about what comes next in going to college, or what comes next for internships, or what comes next for a job of their career path, but just, "What's any job I can get to pay the bills?" And I don't think I need to share the heartbreak of parents who refuse to let their kids go outside during summer and who themselves refuse to go outside. There's some dark times in our country, and I would love to pretend to say it's a one-time thing, but really it kind of comes every 30 to 40 years. So I'll say what I'll say last time. I'm a proud son of immigrants who came to this country for a better opportunity. Only in this great nation can I, as son of an immigrant, rise to the ranks of serving elected office to represent this country and constitution. And I know in every bone in my body what's happening right now is not normal, it's not okay, and in five years' times, everyone's going to be like, "Oh, I wasn't part of that. I didn't believe in that." Because it happens every single time in history this happens. So today, I'm making the stand and saying, "For our Latino community, we are not going to go away. You may have us hiding for a bit, but you will not take away our joy. You will not take our hope in this country, because we come to this nation for our children so that they can have opportunities to have a better life and so that they can one day maybe be like me on this council diet, serving their community, or maybe the next doctor's community, or next engineers, or next lawyers. But goddamn it, I'm going to say it with my chest. We are here to stay, and this is what we're going to do to back our community, because this will come to pass, and I'm happy to support our community, and I'm super grateful that it's our mayor leading the charge of this issue. So yes, I'm voting for this, yes, I support joining the Perdomo case, and yes, support the defense fund. Because in five years' times, I'm going to say this council stood on the right side of history. And thank you, everyone today that came and spoke, because it was your words and your actions that got us here today."
Thank you. Counsel, council member, council member Mar.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment on two fronts. One, that we increase the fund to $200,000, and then two, that we include city employees and their families as eligible for the fund.
Oh. Yeah, both of those are fine.
Concur.
Second? Yeah, okay, you may be heard.
I don't have anything else. I think it's been said tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Or let's call for the question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Reynolds.
I said a lot last time. I'm going to just say a little bit additional this time. This feels like a pretty black and white issue for all of the comments that we heard here tonight, and thank you to everybody who spoke tonight. It's really heartening to know the care and compassion across our community here in Costa Mesa. You coming out and speaking in support of this item really means a lot. I want to, I think, I have four pages of notes of things that have come up. I'm not going to go through all of those. I think I, but what I do want to say is, for folks who, there was, there was some comments on privilege tonight. I think what a privilege it is right now to be able to get up in the morning and go to work, go to a park, go to the grocery store without fear. It's insane that that's a privilege, but that's, that's the truth. One of the first cases that we heard about of a family detained in Costa Mesa, through connections to legal defense, they were eventually released. Some of you may know the story. It's become public as an educational and important story. They were released because they were able to demonstrate credible fear for their lives if they were sent home. And what I realized listening tonight is, people in Costa Mesa right now, our residents, whether here with papers or not, have a credible fear of going to the grocery store, going to school, going to a park. It's a very, very scary time in Costa Mesa. We've seen in the news, mothers get picked up, teenagers taking care of their elementary school siblings now, high school students getting picked up. How many high school students have come through these doors and we've celebrated them because of their academic or athletic achievements? Those kids are at risk. This is a real, real situation. So I'm, as others in the community have shared, really proud of Costa Mesa. It was only 20 years ago that the city council was taking a very different position, and despite my privilege, I still feel the trauma of that because of how it could impact my family and my friends. So I agree with the mayor wholeheartedly. This is an issue of justice. My comments previously on this, I still stand firm. This is an issue of public safety, and this is an issue that's having immediate impacts right now and long-term impacts. There are Costa Mesa graduates, graduates, high school graduates, who are choosing not to go to college because they need to stay home in case their parents are detained and they need to be able to take care of their siblings. This is affecting generations. So thank you for the motion. Thank you for the support in the community and on the council.
All right. Thank you, council member. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-2. Councilmember Pettis and Bealy voting no.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for coming out. We're adjourned.